Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. First off, thank you for everyone that's here tonight. Introduce myself, I'm Mayor Craig Johnson, Mayor of Elk Grove Village. And Elk Grove Village welcomes everyone that's here. I know some people may not be from Elk Grove, which makes sense. Because the Alexian Brothers serves not just our village, it serves the region. And so, we welcome anyone that's from other towns, glad to have you here in Elk Grove. As you fall in love with it, and fall in love with the mayor, you'll probably move to Elk Grove. So we thank you for that in advance. First off, I want to start this way. I want to thank the Alexian Brothers. All this started with announcement about maternity at Alexian Brothers Hospital back in the beginning of July. And, the hospital did not need to be here tonight. They could've just let the process go forward and not be responsive. But I do want to give them kudos. And yes, if you read the papers or saw TV interviews, I've been kind of a harsh critic on some things coming up, and we're going to talk about it tonight. But, I also give credit where credit's due. And for Polly, the CEO, I'll introduce her in a second, to offer to come and meet with the public, to answer any questions you have, that's kind of unheard of. And I thank you on behalf of this community and everyone that uses the Alexian Brothers for doing that. Let me introduce people that are here tonight before we get started. Let me first start with the elected officials here. We have our trustees, trustee Steve Schmidt, Kathy Jerrish, Tammy Miller, Jeff Frankie, Keith Laskin. We also have our state representative, Michelle Musman. And we had Kevin Morrison. There's Kevin back there. Kevin is our county commissioner, our next year's congressman. So, it's good to have that, be our first congressman born and raised in Elk Grove. I don't mind that. So I know Kevin's got other events, so Kevin, thank you for being here tonight. Let me next introduce the panel from Alexian Brothers. I'll kind of go down, if I have you mixed up, I apologize. Raise your hand. First off, we have Polly Davenport, who's the CEO at Alexian Brothers Ascension. So Polly, thank you for being here. We now have Dr. Bordeaux, who is the Chief Clinical Officer for Ascension Hospital. We have Erin Rydel, Director of Nursing and Children's Hospital. Did she raise, I'm sorry? Okay, good. Next, we have Dr. Catherine Ray, Department of Chair of Obstetrics... Babies! I'm a D's and Dums guys, what can I say? We also have Dr. Herman Colone?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you, doctor. Always want to make sure you say doctors' names right, because remember, doctors control us someday. You want to be in a good position with them. And, last one, let me work on this. Dr. Jack Torowitz?
Very nice.
Whoa, see? Director of Ascension in St. Alexian Residency. So, that's who's here tonight on behalf of Alexian Brothers. And I know it's Ascension-Lexian Brothers, but for us old timers, it's always going to be Alexian Brothers. We can't get that out of our blood. Let me give you a little background, what's going on, how we're going to let them make a presentation, then how we're going to open up for questions. Little background, Alexian Brothers has been a great partner of this community for now 60 years, come next year. As we celebrate our 70th anniversary, they'll be celebrating their 60th anniversary here in the community. And that's important. It's a long-term relationship. And we want to make sure they stay a good, strong partner for the next 60 years, too. One of the reasons we're here tonight. Lexian Brothers is also important to this community. As we talk about all the time, Elk Grove is home to the largest business park in North America. Well, believe it or not, with almost 6,000 businesses, our number one employer, number one location for employment in Elk Grove Village, is Alexian Brothers. They employ thousands of people, not hundreds, in the thousands. So, they're an important aspect to this community in a lot of ways, not just being a medical facility that serves us. Now, we all go back, a lot of us, because I'm not the only senior here I see out here, we all go back a long way. When Alexian opened in 1966, they were open two weeks, I broke my first arm, and went to Alexian Brothers. First of five times, I broke arms. So, they did phenomenal. But later on, about, let's see, 11 years ago now, they did my heart bypass surgery at Alexian Brothers also. They also did other surgeries, my shoulder surgery, other surgeries I've had over the years. So, I have personal intimate knowledge with the hospital as a patient. Also, all four of my children, ironically talking about maternity, what? All four of my children were born at Alexian Brothers, and eight of my 10 grandchildren were born at Alexian Brothers. So I've seen Alexian Brothers all different ways. And my mother, who in 1984, they came out with a new, cutting-edge way to help ease people through life, my mother was one of the very first patients in hospice at Alexian Brothers. Back then, it was actually done on a floor in the hospital. It just came out. It was a new concept. Who believed in just letting people die? You're supposed to fight to the end. It was a different way, a different concept. So, I've seen Alexian Brothers personally on all different angles, maybe that's why I got a little fired up when all this first started happening, and stuff. But it's because I care about the hospital, because I've seen personally, and as a community, as a mayor, what it's done for Elk Grove Village. And it's been a great asset to this community over all the years. But we've worked together, I said it's a partnership. They've got a full interchange, right there at 290, because the village stepped up and worked with the brothers to make a full interchange at that hospital. Their full interchange helped Alexian Brothers become a emergency room level 2. And that was important for them. And honestly, all of us from Elk Grove here, we've all given millions of dollars, not just in patient costs, but in taxes. We've waived tens of millions of dollars in fees to the hospital over the past 60 years. They're a nonprofit, we treat them nonprofit, we've been charging them permit fees, any other fees for work they've done. We waived them, because it was a partnership between the hospital and the village. Also, we see some of our firefighters there, chiefs here, what, almost 5,000 ambulance calls a year? 5,000 ambulance calls a year to Alexian Brothers? Over 5,000 times a year, Elk Grove ambulances bring people to Alexian Brothers. So we work with them on a lot of levels, and it's important. And it's important for this community. So where are we at today? Why are we here today? First off, I've learned more about hospitals and medicine, what's going on in the past six weeks than I've learned in my entire life. Let's all be honest, we all see it, the world of medicine is changing. You know, we always talk about Alexian Brothers being a community hospital. And it was. When I was a kid born here, and raised here, and first broken arm, all the rest, this was truly a community hospital. The brothers, us old timers remember the brothers, the brother Phil on down, they're phenomenal. Brother Val is still historical in my mind, all the decorating they did and all that. But, it was a community hospital. The sad part is, today, community hospitals do not really exist. Maybe out in rural Nebraska, but around here, all the hospitals are now part of networks. But, but, that does not mean they cannot be a community-oriented hospital. And that's our goal, as the world changes. That we keep the Alexian Brothers as a community-oriented hospital in this changing world. Because to me, I think that's critical. And, our hope is it can happen. Now, with all that said, a couple of things to talk about. One, tonight's meeting is not just to talk about maternity. If you've got questions on other topics, they're here to talk to you. If they can't answer it, they'll get your name and contact number, and they'll get you back with an answer. Polly's made that promise to me tonight, and that's why it should be. Ida can't answer questions all the time, I always call people back. But, they, with the experts they have up there, the support staff, they'll probably answer most of the questions. But again, one of the main topics we do want to talk about, maternity leaving. Let's be honest, I'm old school, usually had a hospital from birth to death. Birth is maternity. But, we'll talk about what's happened on that. I know there's been changes there. ENT is no longer at Alexian Brothers, like it was. Pulmonary, I know for us older folks, pulmonary is important, that's changed somewhat. We're going to address that tonight for you if you have questions. Are there less doctors in the medical buildings? I know that, they know that, we all know that, if we walk through the buildings. Hope they can address what's going on with that. And then, the big thing I think, most important, from my view, is the emergency room. Emergency rooms are your first connection with the hospital. There also can be life or death rooms for many people. And we want to make sure we still have the level 2, high-level trauma hospital that we've had for years, that's still continuing on. I hope it is, I believe it is, but I want to hear about it tonight, and that'll be there for us. So, let me say this. Alexian Brothers, as I said before, have been great as far as being a hospital and partnering with us. And again, we've talked a bit, Polly and I have talked a little about it, they want to continue that. It may have slipped over the past few years, but they want to bring it back. Remember the Alexian Brothers Tour of Elk Grove Bike Race? No, the brothers loved it, they stayed up there crying, cheering all the time, it was fun. Or they had different clinics going on in the village, at different village events. We'd like to see that happen more, like it was before. And I'm sure they'll talk a little bit about that tonight, too. So, one last thing before I go, how we're going to run this meeting tonight. This is the first, and I think the important meeting tonight, because you really get a chance to talk. But what's driving this is, for Alexian Brothers to make changes in the maternity and delivery, they have to go before a state board review. Now, before they do a state board review, they have a public hearing, the state board reviewer has a public hearing. They'll have the public hearing here in Elk Grove Village. They'll be at the village hall on September 16th, that's a week from Tuesday, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. The thing about the public hearing is, it's not a give and take like tonight. You have a bunch of guys up there, maybe women, sitting there, and you come in, you got two minutes to make a statement, they take it down, they transcribe it, then they give the packet of all the statements to the full board, they'll review it, when making the determination, I believe that's November, Polly?
Yeah, we hope to be able to do that.
So the hope is in November, they'll make determination to allow the maternity ward the changes that Alexian's asking for, if it can go forward or not. So, that's open to the public. My hope tonight, and the reason why we're doing this, and I'm thankful for the, you know, Polly and the group to do this, is, I think we should have a dialogue. I think we should be able to ask the tough questions. Find out what's going on, not only today, but what's the future for the hospital look like? We need to know that. And I got a feeling a lot of people's concerns may be answered, they may not be. A lot of people may say, hey, I don't have to go to the board on the 16th? Or they say, now I'm going to go board for sure. That's fine. But you're going to at least have the opportunity to hear what they've got to say, and let's hear their side of what's happening at the hospital. And trust me, I'm looking forward to it tonight as much as you are. And no one's been a harsher critic, a hard on them, you can ask Polly, we've had the meetings, than I've been. Because I truly care about it with all my heart, and I'm sure all of you do. And we want to make sure it goes well. So here's how tonight's going to run. First off, the hospital's going to make a brief presentation. You're going to use the screen and do that. After the presentation, I'm going to come back up, I'm done with my long windy speech here, and we're going to allow, if you don't mind, with due courtesy, we'll let elected officials ask the first questions. And then we're going to open up to anybody else that has a question. We've got the microphone right there. Now just so you know, Channel 6, our local TV station, is filming it. They're not playing it live, they'll play it back starting either tomorrow, or Thursday, or sometime like that, I mean, Saturday or Sunday, they'll play back then, so you have an opportunity if you didn't see it, or you want someone else you know to see it, they have a chance to see it. We do have some TV stations here tonight, because this is not, like I said, just Elk Grove, this is a regional issue. And trust me, we're not the first hospital that's going to be going through this. This is going to be happening throughout the area. Unfortunately, like the guinea pigs, they're going to have to go through it. But I think it's important that we all have a chance to ask. So, after the elected officials, if you open up, I ask you just come on down to the microphone, you know, wait till it's open, or wait in line if you want to. I ask two things out of you. One, actually three things. One, please be polite and respectful. I ask that from all of us. I know people can get heated when it comes to healthcare, I know it can be personal and tough, I understand that, when it could be your job, I understand that. But, let's all be polite and professional. We can agree to disagree on some things, that's fine. But, let's do that, because that's how we do things at Elk Grove. We're all neighbors and friends here. We all know each other. I see people out there I've known my whole life. So, let's do that. Two, on your questions, if someone's already asked a question, you don't need to repeat it. I know you may want a chance to say something, but you don't need to repeat it. And, please make it reference to this, not being offensive, I'd probably do the same thing, but don't come up and say, Mr. Davenport, I sent a check to the hospital three weeks ago, and he hasn't cleared my bank yet, do you know what's going... You know, it's maybe important, I'm not saying it's not important to you, but this is not the right avenue or the area to discuss that, if you don't mind. Because Polly is committed. We will all stay here as long as it takes to answer every one of your questions. If it's two hours, it's two hours, if it's four hours, it's four hours. Am I correct, Polly? So, we're willing to stay here. We don't mind. Thank God the Bears aren't playing tonight. So we're in good shape that way. If it was Monday night, might be a different story. So, that's how we want to run it tonight. Is there any questions of me before we get started? It's a small room, I can hear you, we're all good? Great. So, Polly, it's all yours.
Thank you, thank you, thanks everyone. Mayor, thank you so much, thank you for hosting this. We're going to have to pass down to myself. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, thank you for hosting this, and thank you for your passion. Thank you for your passion, and thank you for the ongoing dialogue as we've worked through this issue. You know, as the mayor said, we are very committed to Elk Grove Village, and we are very committed to the legacy that the Alexian Brothers created over 60 years ago. You know, I feel like after tonight, you're going to recognize there's a lot of committed people to ensuring that Alexian Brothers continues to excel. In fact, I'd like for everybody that's part of the planning committee, leadership that is here today, please raise your hand. All right, so we've got a lot of folks that have been helping us work through this, and we do want to be able to address your concerns, and that's why we're here today, and we deeply appreciate that. I also understand this is a very personal issue that touches the hearts of many people around the labor and delivery services. We empathize with that, we understand that, and so, we want to be able to answer your questions. And I would also say that I apologize. I apologize if our initial communication was confusing. That was not the intent, which is why we're here today, and I want to thank the mayor, because as we've said, we've had many conversations, because our initial intent was not very clear. And we're also happy to talk about the emergency department. I'm not going to talk for very long, I've got just a couple of slides, but when we had our initial forum, we got a lot of feedback on that, and so, we've got a, we hope we're able to dispel some of your concerns and talk to you about the future of Alexian Brothers. All right, with that, let's see, here we go. Just to level set a little bit, we announced, as the mayor said in July, that we would be relocating obstetric deliveries, labor and delivery services. We will continue to have outpatient obstetric care through ambulatory care services, mammographies, and other things that women need within the community. We do understand moving deliveries to St. Alexius does create some angst, but we want to assure you, we have a plan for that, and ensure you that it will be a safe plan for those deliveries. Since we announced that, we hosted the forum on July 19th, we've extended offers to every associate that was, that has been working at Alexian Brothers, and we're pleased that 89% of those associates have chosen to transition to St. Alexius once we receive Health Facility Review Board approval. We've been conducting tours at St. Alexius with the staff, and we begin an initial orientation of those nurses. As I said, there's a team here that's been part of the planning committee, but there's been over 70 leaders and associates working on this plan to ensure that we have a smooth transition. We were able to meet with 15 EMS providers from five municipalities, and we've been having conversations with over 60 Northwest suburban physicians, not just obstetricians, primary care, neonatologists, pediatricians, anyone that might have their thoughts or opinions about this move. We've also been talking to our federally qualified healthcare partners. We get a fair number of deliveries that come into Alexian Brothers from those partners, and they're from a pretty broad geography, and so we've been having those conversations. We've also had the pleasure of touring several of our elected officials, so that they would be able to ask their questions and have a view of Alexian Brothers and also St. Alexius. And we're in the middle of finalizing the training programs for nurses and providers with the support of our perinatal network. And, and the work's being done between St. Alexian and Alexian Brothers. And before I forget, I made a note, I want to also thank the fire and the police of Elk Grove Village. They're a very critical partner to us, not in only the obstetrics world, but in all of the times that we reach out to them to assist us with whatever our needs may be to keep our associates and to keep our patients safe at Alexian Brothers. So let's talk about our path forward. I did not, this isn't, this is not an all-encompassing slide, I am very excited about the future of Alexian Brothers. Last year, we spent about $70 million doing some improvements just to the Alexian Brothers campus. That is not the full investment of Ascension for the Northwest suburbs, that is just the investment at Alexian Brothers. This year, we're on pace to spend about $32 million over the next two years. I heard, someone told me today in the hallway, they said, oh, I'm being transferred to the old building, the old part of Alexian Brothers. If you've been there, you understand, the east tower's where we built up the new wing, and then there's areas of the hospital, they're many, many years old. So that 30-plus million is going to do a refresh on that west tower, and the areas that many of you may have been in in the past. So we're very excited about that investment. We're going, this is our commitment, my commitment, Dr. Bordeaux's commitment, the leadership here. We are going to ensure that the experience you have at the emergency department is what we would expect for our families. We know we've fallen short, we are not planning to build a new emergency department at this time. Dr. Bordeaux will talk to you a little bit about our ideas, he is an emergency room physician, emergency department. And, and we really do have already plans in place, we watch our consumer experience frequently, and we're already starting to see some improvements. We want the waits in the emergency department to be nonexistent, that is our goal. Every emergency department wants that. It's not always possible, but we're absolutely striving for that. We also want to continue to serve our community, so we are a community-oriented hospital, we are not a specialty hospital. If you come in with pneumonia, if you come in with COVID, if you come with an infection, we can take care of you. However, what we are excited about, and what we have invested many, many resources in, is our ability to take care of very complex cardiac, neuro, spine care. No one should have to leave Elk Grove Village for that type of care unless you choose to, or frankly, unless you need a transplant. And I hope that you never need that. So, that's the type of hospital you have in your community that can keep you from having to travel into the city for those services. We also, we need to expand our preventative care services. Colon screening, breast screening, lung screening, that's how you keep a very long life, you keep out of the hospital, because we have those screening capabilities. We have an endoscopy suite that has grown year over year 27%, so we've got to find space, we've got to make that a better experience. We want to meet all of the needs of the community, and that's why, you know, we're here tonight to talk to you about that. As, as the mayor mentioned, we've probably fallen short on some of our involvement in Elk Grove community-specific events, we are committed to course-correct that. Well, we'd be working with the fire department, the Elk Grove Village Park District. This is our community, we want to make sure we represent it well. And we will continue to explore other services that need to be expanded. The mayor mentioned the hospice residence, which is across the street from the hospital. Not many healthcare systems have a, their own hospice residence where you can go at your end of life. Lots of places don't do that anymore. So we've got some exciting things for Alexian Brothers, that's what we're here to talk about tonight, but when we think about St. Alexius, and we do think of them as sister hospitals, the representatives here, we have Alexian Brothers physicians, we have St. Alexius, and we have leaders from both hospitals. That's how we look at these hospitals. How can we complement each other? How can we not compete for resources? And I'm very excited and proud of the fact that St. Alexius is our dedicated women and children's hospital for the Northwest suburbs. When we talked in July, there was a concern about our ability to handle the volume at St. Alexius. We were able to already receive Health Facility Review Board approval to expand our neonatal care beds. I realize we put NICU on here, and we should know better than to use acronyms. So that stands for Neonatal Care. That is the sickest, tiniest little babies that you can imagine, that we can care for at St. Alexius. And I can assure you, if that was your tiny baby, you would want them to be able to stay in the Northwest suburbs versus having to transition into the city, which unfortunately, some communities are not able to provide. And then, the other thing, we have Dr. Jack Torowitz and Dr. Ray, we do need to try to continue our teaching programs. And so when we use the term residency, that is in reference to teaching physicians and, and I'm not going to say hope, hope's not a strategy, and convincing them to stay in this community, to be a, you know, a provider in our Elk Grove Village surrounding community. So we have a very robust teaching program. So with that, those are my comments. What I'd like to do right now is just hit one head-on, and then we'll open it up for questions. If Dr. Bordeaux would just give his comments for just a minute or two about our intentions to improve the emergency department at Alexian Brothers.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm David Bordeaux, I serve as the market chief clinical officer, and I've been serving as the chief medical officer at Alexian Brothers since April. One of my first priorities since I walked in was to help the emergency department with their throughput. We are committed to providing the best care, and I can tell you, that's never been in question. The emergency physicians at Alexian Brothers, all board-certified, excellent, well-trained doctors. The care isn't the issue. The experience and the throughput, what we call, how a patient comes into the waiting room and goes through their care, hopefully until discharge or until admission, is where we need to improve. Although we are not getting a brand-new emergency department, we have the space to reconfigure how we take patients through that department, so that they aren't waiting hours in the waiting room. It's going to take some work, we've already begun that. That meeting Polly referred to with our EMS partners from the five areas around that all bring ambulances to us, we met with all of them and listened to their comments about their experience of when they pull up and bring a patient in via ambulance. We heard them give us feedback on what we can do better, and we're implementing those changes now. So I can tell you with 100% certainty, we are committed to providing the best possible, we already provide the best possible care, but the best possible service to the patients who are arriving, especially when you come in on your own, or whether you come in through one of our providers in our EMS system. So, that I just wanted to tell you right off the bat, we are committed to fixing that.
Now, if I can, just a line, I think, if I can't ask a question. One of the questions brought up, people, okay, if maternity moves to St. Alexis, I know, watching my grandkids, even my kids, nowadays, most deliveries, probably almost all of them are pre-planned. Come in Friday, 9:00 AM, we're inducing, or come in Friday, 9:00 AM, we're going to induce cesarean and all that. But, emergencies still happen. So if someone goes into labor in Elk Grove, baby's crowning, I mean, it's already getting, they go to Alexian Brothers, are you able to still handle maternity deliveries at our emergency room after the maternity ward moves out?
Yes.
Okay, so no problem, if it's a dangerous, I don't know the terms, I know other people I hear know the terms, dangerous, whatever, you can handle any situation that comes up?
That's correct. We will still have obstetric, OB-GYN doctors on-call, available at Alexian Brothers, and we will have a process in place, and we are working on that now with St. Alexis, to transfer mom and baby directly to St. Alexis.
Okay, so, but you could do a delivery...
If we had to, they would deliver first, and then be transferred to St. Alexis.
Okay, so there's no risk that way for, okay. Now, you mentioned going to St. Alexis. A concern that a lot of women have brought up to me was, well, my OB doctors now is at Alexian Brothers, where they move to St. Alexis to be close to the hospital they're delivering at, do I have to now go to Hoffman every time instead of doing my doctor here in Elk Grove? I mean, is there a way that the doctors will still stay? I mean, is there a way that the doctors still stay here? Because I know Polly, you mentioned, you can still get your tests and everything you need at Alexian Brothers, but if your doctors move, are the doctors staying or all leaving? What's, go ahead.
So we have a number of, I can't answer that, there's not one answer, but there is a large group of our Ascension OB-GYN doctors who will continue to provide services at Alexian Brothers. Their clinic remains there, they remain there, they will do all the prenatal, all the imaging, ultrasounds, and at the time of the delivery, that group is also going to be at St. Alexis to go ahead and deliver the baby.
Okay, so up until delivery time, potentially, everything will still be done at Alexian Brothers?
Correct, and even after.
Delivery time, okay, even after, okay, thank you. With that said, I'm going to first open up, I'm sorry I jumped on, but I hear what people ask me. Keith, any questions today for, if you don't mind going to the, thank you.
Thank you again for doing this for us and asking some questions. So the first question I have is, what's, kind of thinking of the opposite, what's the risk and concerns that the citizens would have if this did not, if this transition did not happen?
If they deny, if the state denies it?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is the risk?
What are the risks that the citizens would have if, say, the transition didn't happen, labor and delivery stays, you know, if it gets denied?
So I think, you know, as part of our decision, we were looking at the long-term scenario planning for, you know, how many of our OB physicians are going to continue to deliver versus, you know, only do GYNs? So I think what we're trying to do is be in front of any potential transitions of physicians that may choose to not do obstetrics. I mean, the risk, we will continue to serve our community. We absolutely will. And that's why we must go through the process with the Health Facilities Review Board, so it's not as though something would happen suddenly to put anything at risk.
Okay.
We will continue with our planning, and we will wait to work with the Health Facilities Review Board, so.
All right. Another question I have is, do you have examples of hospitals that do not have labor and delivery? And do you know about their successes on what they do?
Sure, I mean, I also will ask for my partners up here to speak to that, but I've certainly worked in the emergency departments that did not have obstetric services. And again, the success is having a partner. So, you know, I worked in emergency departments that didn't have other services, and then you're calling hospitals, looking for the service, and trying to transfer a patient. For this to be successful, and what will make this successful is having a sister hospital and a team with one phone call is ready to accept, and ambulance on the way, mom and baby go, or mom goes, and it's directly right up to labor and delivery, the physician is aware, ready to accept the patient. And so it's the process and the sister hospital that, that partnership is what makes it successful.
Okay. Another thing too about addressing the community needs I saw on your slide is that, you know, Elk Grove is also getting younger, so what's the thoughts on that, or what were the metrics that you have to kind of support the idea of moving to labor, delivery to St. Alexis?
Yeah, we heard that at the forum initially, and we understand that. We empathize with the question whether, you know, how do you handle the fact that the younger population is coming to Elk Grove Village? How would they feel about not delivering at that hospital? I think the reality is, there are seven hospitals within a 30-minute driving time, and, you know, the moms are going to go where the doctors go. So, you know, when Dr. Bordeaux talks about, you know, what's going to happen with physicians remaining at ABMC, you know, we have employed physicians and we have independent physicians. So our feeling is that moms are going to do, go where their physicians go, as they do now with pediatrics and everything else. So we do take that into consideration. Alexian Brothers has been serving a very large geographic footprint of deliveries. A small percent of deliveries are currently coming from Elk Grove Village. So we're trying to serve the needs of multiple communities. As we said, we had 15 EMS providers at a meeting.
And I was hearing the percentages, so residents from Elk Grove is, what was it, 6% or 8% you're saying?
6% of the deliveries this past year came specifically out of Elk Grove Village, delivered at Alexian Brothers.
Okay. And then for pediatric doctors, you were talking about, I love it, instead of saying hope, you're convincing them, can you explain some of the efforts that you're doing that you're convincing them to bring them back? Is there any, can you explain anything that you're doing right now today to kind of convince them to come back?
All kinds of physicians or pediatrics?
Pediatrics in particular.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, the pediatricians will stay at Alexian Brothers. Some who aren't at St. Alexis will also be on staff there, so to ground on newborns and to see patients after they deliver. But we will continue to provide pediatric services, just as we have been at Alexian Brothers.
Yeah, because right now, currently, I know the number has been getting smaller. Actually, currently, my children go to Buffalo Grove and see the doctors, or so I was hoping to see if can we convince them to come a little bit closer, and so that's what I was looking for.
I mean, you're describing the challenge that healthcare is facing.
Okay.
Providers, talented clinical people, and where they want to choose to work. Just want to remind everybody, we do not employ every physician. We do not control what the physicians decide to do. We wish they'd stay, and we work very hard, and you say, how do we recruit them back? We create a great place for them to work, we make sure that their patients are happy, we make sure we have great technology, we make sure that, you know, we're responsive to them. I mean, we're constantly working with physicians to assure them that we want them to be a part of our team.
Yeah, we could work with you somehow to say, our community is getting younger, this would be a good opportunity and potential, and that's all, like, hoping to hear. Just a couple more things is for the, sorry about, I know, I know, sorry.
Keith, you're a politician speaker, that's what happens.
I'm learning from the best, I'm sorry.
He's smart, he says the best.
So emergency room improvements, what's the before and after? Can you explain just some small wins on, what were the wait, where are the wait times now, and then what are the wait times today?
Sure. So, depends how you describe wait times. We're very good at having a patient who comes in to have a provider see the patient right away. The problem is, is sometimes that patient is seen, tests are ordered, the right x-rays are ordered, but they're asked to sit in the waiting room because the main department is filled with patients. So to fix that, we are creating a secondary area for patients who don't need to be where the ambulance has come in with patients laying flat on gurneys, that can walk in, be seen by that provider, that part's happening quickly, but then not be told, now go sit down in the waiting room for an hour, we'll get back to you. An hour turns into two, two turns into three, they don't know what's going on, they want to leave. Now, it's see the provider, have your tests ordered, now come back into the secondary area where we have nurses, technicians, take you through the process, keep you moving so that we, if you can be discharged, we'd like you to be discharged in about one to two hours, instead of one to two hours in the waiting room, and then get seen, and then find out what's going on, and now it's another hour. So that's what we'll be changing. The flow of how patients come in, and then where they go next to continue the care, to be discharged, is what we will do to both make the experience better and to make it more efficient.
And that was my follow-up question.
That's a big, big change in your emergency room.
And what it will also allow is the rooms in the back that need to be open for our ambulances remain open for the ambulances. So they're not waiting to put a patient into a room, or worse, be told to take their patient to the waiting room.
How soon, how soon will this be implemented?
I would like to be able to say we can do this by the end of the year. Like, I'm pushing for every few weeks to look and see what we're doing to upgrade that process.
And then by doing that, you also have, because I know sometimes you have to have doctors on-call, sometimes you have, like, orthopedics on-call, and sometimes there's a little weight on that and stuff. So these on-call doctors will be able to respond, you'll be waiting there for them as you go through the process?
Well, they'll always be available. They have a time commitment that they have to, they have to respond right away by phone, and they have to be onsite, whether it's 30 minutes or 60 minutes for the emergencies.
They do, so 30 to 60 minutes, they will be there?
Yeah.
And that's something you'll hold them to?
Yeah, so we're working through all those specialties. This hospital is very lucky because it does provide all the services. There are plenty of emergency rooms where they don't have all the services on-call, and again, you're stuck trying to call other hospitals. We have it, and we just need to make the process and the efficiency better, and we're doing that.
And you're committing tonight...
And we're working with more doctors to be on that call schedule, to be available to us.
And you're committing tonight to all of us here, those changes are going to be happening hopefully by the end of the year?
Yes.
If not, okay, thank you.
I'm going to challenge, I hope it's not a strategy. We have a target date, you know, by December 1st, we're already using that space. I would like to say, will we ever build another emergency department? Possibly. But I want to reiterate, our goal as a healthcare ministry, and not just a hospital system, is to keep people out of the hospital. We are adding primary care, we are increasing access points, but when you need us, we will be there. So we need to work through the space and the resources that we have currently to validate whether we do need to add more, add another space or another part of the building for emergency department. So I do appreciate your questions.
Thank you. Yeah, my last call, my last question was about the on-call time, so we're good.
Thank you. You brought up something about ambulances, and I know we talked briefly about, we'll give you a chance to address it. The big concern was, a lot of times, and I know this firsthand, two of my grandkids over the years had to be taken from Elk Grove to St. Alexis, which makes sense, they had the Children's Hospital expert there. So one case, my son said, okay, I'll drive him, and the hospital said, no, he's been admitted, we have to, he has to be ambulanced there. My son said, no, I'll drive him, couldn't. The problem is, at that time, the ambulance bill that he got, that, he's got good insurance, his wife's a teacher, in the local district, good insurance, the ambulance bill he had to pay was almost $7,000 for a 15-minute ride to St. Alexis. Polly, I know we talked about, you said that's going to be addressed, you want to?
Yes. So we are working closely with our ambulance service. Now, I can't speak for every ambulance service, but the one, if you're moving to a higher level of care, there should not be a cost out of pocket for that service. So those are things, and that came up in the OB forum as well. So you're moving to a higher level of care that we cannot provide, and we do have to do a better job of making sure, we know that's occurring, and so we have a process we're working on to make sure that those events don't occur.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
I just want to say, the reason I'm here is to listen to you, to listen to the people who do represent the community. So I have my opinion, but I'd rather hear what everybody else has to say and do it. I am happy to hear about the emergency department. I have been in there, and I tell you, that's what people are working on, and that's it. So I know you guys have the right people, which, I hear a lot of stories from a lot of people that, about how they're sitting waiting room for a long time, so I hope you take care of that, but I mean, very interesting what everybody has to say, because that's why we're elected to this.
Thank you.
Kami, any questions? Minimal questions?
You know me, don't you?
Yes.
First of all, thank you. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you Polly and Erin and Roxanne, where's Roxanne? For the tour, Amanda, she, there's Amanda. I had a great tour, and I wanted to let the public know that I wanted to find out more facts on my own. So not just the library forum, I felt that that was a little bit difficult. So I wanted to find out more on my own, and I took a tour of ABMC as well as St. Alexis, and thank you for all the time that you took for me. What I saw there, and what I asked was, how do you define center of excellence? And Polly, if you could share with the group what your definition was, because it was perfect, I wrote it down just in case you forgot, but if you could go ahead and tell, what is the center of excellence? What does that mean, and why did we have to have this?
I appreciate that you asking me to answer. I would like, for our esteemed colleagues, and we've got Dr. Jack Torowitz and Dr. Ray, it's one thing to come from me, but I really think it should come from the physicians that live and breathe it every day. So Dr. Jack Torowitz or Dr. Cloney, either one, do you mind sharing your perspective? How do we explain that in simple terms?
Can you all hear me? Yeah, so thanks, thank...
Move the mic close to, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Generally, so a center of excellence is generally defined as a facility which meets certain criteria in the provision of high-quality services in a given area of medicine. So centers of excellence are typically designated not necessarily by one individual organization or one individual accrediting body. So for example, in obstetrics, there is the Illinois Perinatal Collaborative, which reviews statistics for individual organizations, looks at how those organizations are structured, looks how their primary care paradigms work, looks at what specialty and backup perspective or backup services are available, and also looks at their statistics and looks at their outcomes. And in so doing, if all of those line up, they can earn whatever designation they're eligible for. And center of excellence is generally the one that seems to, that rhetoric or those words seem to be common among all the different possible designations. One of the designations that we went after is something called the Center of Excellence in Minimally Invasive Gynecologic Surgery. Now granted, that's not obstetrics, however, the process in terms of attaining that designation looked at our surgical statistics, looked at how we do things, in other words, how we admit patients, how we prepare patients before they are admitted. We looked at the throughput of how those patients go through the system. We look at how we handle contingencies for things that may happen during the operative experience, and how we are set up to handle those. We look at the coverage. So in other words, it's not a designation necessarily that you sort of fill out a form, pay a fee, and, you know, they send you a certificate. It's a real thing. And insurance, insurance companies offer this to some centers, organizations, like in the case of the gynecologic surgery I mentioned, it's called Surgical Review Corporation, the Illinois Perinatal Collaborative, and others. So in general terms, that is how a center of excellence is defined, and it is definitely in the interest of each center, if they make the criteria, to attain those designations and to maintain them, because it's generally accepted that centers of excellence have better quality care, have better outcomes, and generally are able to deliver care more efficiently.
Let me, let me ask, Dr. Ray, did you want to add anything to that? I appreciate that, Dr. Jack Torowitz.
Sure.
And Dr. Ray is a practicing physician at St. Alexis, chair.
I am an OB-GYN physician. I am a private practicing physician, not a hospital-employed physician.
I'm sorry, doctor, could you pull the mic?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I am a private practicing OB-GYN who has my own practice, I'm not hospital-employed. And I have been at St. Alexis since 1996, when I first came out of residency. So I have been in the area for many years, and I'm very loyal to this area. In regards to a center of excellence, I like my descriptions to be very simple. It is, our goal for what we want to have is a location that provides both low-risk and high-risk care to our patients in all of our communities, giving them, people who come in and have a perfectly normal delivery with no complications, the ability to come in, be taken care of in a respectful manner, have a healthy pregnancy, delivery and baby, and go home happy and healthy. That is not always the case in obstetrics, and it can change at the drop of a hat. So if you have someone at a hospital that is a lower level of care, then you don't often have the high-risk doctors that you need around to help manage the medical problems that occur, the surgical capabilities to help manage the surgical complications that can occur in the process of that, and the other supportive measures that you need in a hospital to handle hemorrhages that happen in the middle of the night, babies that need excessive neonatal intensive care care. We have that at St. Alexis, the Level 3 center, that allows us to keep so many more of those patients in our neighborhoods and not have to transfer them into the city. When I first came out here, we were transferring everybody to Loyola and downtown and Rockford. And I felt so sorry for the parents of those babies or those patients and family members who were separated from them because they had to work, they had to travel hours back and forth to the hospital, and in creating a center of excellence, we're creating a location where we can have as much of that as possible in one center to provide for our communities.
Well, I appreciate that, because I had three grandchildren born at St. Alexis, and one was in NICU. And I talk about emotional, it was emotional. And when I toured just recently, I got to see the room that he was in, so I thank you for that. One of the things that we talked about is the landscape of deliveries when I was on the tour, and the landscape has changed, where deliveries are more, are less, but more complex. And I think that was one of the things, Erin, we talked about. Can you explain that, what that means about deliveries are more complex than maybe 60 years ago?
We're seeing, we're seeing such a change in our population and in our communities for those that maybe have children or grandchildren... For those that maybe have children or grandchildren, women are having babies much later in life. And with having babies much later in life, we have extra medical problems that comes with those pregnancies. One of the things that we're able to offer at St. Alexis is that full comprehensive care. So, like Dr. Ray said, whether you are low-risk and have no complications, or whether you are high-risk, we can support patients who stay with us. Sometimes they're inpatient, meaning they have to stay in the hospital with us for, for months, and we take them all the way through their delivery and support them to patients that come in really quickly and have a baby and are able to go home quickly as well.
Thank you. And my last question is, I'm really glad to see that 89% of the nurses that were at ABMC have been transitioning over, and I understand you're already doing some training. So, some will be NICU nurses as well? And I think that's awesome. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. One question, I'm sorry, that I know everyone here is going to ask. You're moving maternity and maternity and delivery today, ENT's kind of stepped away. Is there other news or other things we need to worry about coming in the next six months? Another department leaving, or another department leaving, or another department leaving? Is this just the first of many? Or are we seeing, we're kind of now feel we're at the position we need to be at?
I would say it's just the opposite, we're growing. Both in primary care, and bringing more primary care physicians to this community, to bring more clinics, outpatient offices, and areas for people to be seen. Orthopedics, already have more orthopedists coming back onto the staff or joining the staff new, to help beef up that ER call and to be present in the community, and at Alexian Brothers. ENT, we have two full-time ENT doctors that are there. It's not the same group that you knew and were there, I knew, they've moved on, but we've replaced them with two other ENTs, and we're working with another ENT group to come and support Alexian Brothers. Pulmonary, same. A physician is, a number of physicians are there, working together to do both procedural and general pulmonary care, and they're hiring more doctors themselves. These are not ours, they are independent. So, medical staffs in hospitals have a mix of doctors that we hire because we have a need, and doctors who choose, like Dr. Ray, to be an independent physician, but be loyal and committed to their hospital. We have a mix of both, and I would say, just the opposite, we are growing in all those areas.
At Alexian Brothers Elk Grove?
At Alexian Brothers.
Okay, so surgeries, all the rest from the orthopedics, you will be seeing increase in, okay, thank you. Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Jarish, one of the trustees. I too want to thank the staff, who was gracious enough to give me their time, and I toured also, and a lot of my questions and concerns have already been asked. But Erin, and perhaps Dr. Ray, can you describe the three floors of, of care for moms and babies at St. Alexis? I was just blown away by what I saw, especially an emergency room department.
So, I, I want to make sure I understand the question you're asking, the three floors, meaning the three locations within the hospital that we care for moms and babies?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the question.
Yes.
So, we have a NICU, or, sorry, a neonatal intensive care unit that is on one floor, that is the fourth floor. We have a mother-baby unit that is where most of our postpartum moms will go after delivery, that allows their babies to room in with them in every room. We have a small nursery on that floor as well, in case the baby needs special services that don't require the NICU, the neonatal intensive care unit for care. We also have the ability for the babies to be watched by a nurse if mom wants to take a shower and there's no one else in the room. We never leave the baby alone anywhere. Labor and delivery is on the sixth floor. We have both antipartum services there, meaning moms who get hospitalized and need to stay in the hospital for a while before they're able to deliver. They're either too preterm or need stabilization before they can actually be delivered. And then we have labor rooms, and we have three ORs for caesarean sections and emergency surgeries that need to happen. And we also have an area there, which is what we consider our OBED. So, there are specific concerns for pregnant women that come in with emergency problems that occur in relationship to their pregnancy, not to, you know, some other broken foot or a cut on their leg, or something like that. We work very closely with the emergency room, which is downstairs on the first floor of the hospital, and sometimes combine care in both situations. But if someone is pregnant and above, I believe, 16 weeks, they immediately come upstairs if it's a pregnancy-related problem. We have designated doctors assigned to labor and delivery that actually assess those patients in the OBED, testing and monitoring. We're there so that if the problem is concerning enough that they immediately have to be delivered, they're admitted, prepped, and gone, go straight to the OR and don't even have to leave the floor. So, it, it serves us very well to, again, take care of our patients in the most concise and safe way possible.
Yeah, thank you very much. That, that aspect of it, I didn't know existed. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that accurately and, and shared that. And a question on center of excellences. The Elk Grove location, do you have departments that you would consider center of excellence now?
So, like I said, Alexian Brothers is a full-service community hospital, but I feel that this community is so fortunate, and Polly really said it great, about the services that we can provide that are cutting-edge, that many communities have to go downtown to the Rush, Northwesterns, and tertiary care academic centers for. So, in cardiovascular services, we are providing, again, the most up-to-date, most progressive, most advanced valve surgeries, open-heart surgeries, treatment of congestive heart failure. That, I would absolutely say, is perhaps one of the best cardiac centers in this area. Similarly, neurosurgery, brain surgery, the treatment of spinal cord and spine surgery is truly outstanding. Again, these are services that not many community hospitals provide at the level Alexian Brothers provides. Those are the two outstanding services, but that does not mean, like I said, I wouldn't, I would come for general surgery, orthopedic surgery, I'm probably forgetting the basic services that we just continue to provide day in and day out, that aren't going anywhere.
Great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yeah, just have a couple of comments, and a question, a couple of comments. First of all, are there any departments from St. Alexis coming over here? Any women on that?
No, there is not, however, over time, there has been. So, for instance, years ago, open-heart surgery was done at St. Alexis, that transitioned to only being done at Alexian Brothers. So, we do try to look at both hospitals, and that would be the most recent one. Pediatric inpatient pediatrics transitioned from Alexian to St. Alexis Children's Hospital several years ago. So, we don't have any plans imminently right now, but we do try to constantly analyze our resources and the needs of the community.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make a comment about the emergency room. To give you background, I was a police officer here for 42 years. I started when there was just the one tower, worked with Dr. Moore, the emergency room there. We were there a lot of times, and I saw a lot of miracles by paramedics on the street bringing people back to life. I saw a lot of miracles in the emergency room. I saw it grow over the years. And it's, it's a wonderful emergency room, I would not hesitate to go there, although, I'm going to tell you about an experience I just had a couple of weeks ago. I was brought in by ambulance, I had a couple of problems, one of them was dehydration. They brought me in, wheeled me through the emergency room, took me in the hallway, put me in a, in a wheelchair, and I sat in the ER, I mean, in the ER waiting room, the whole time I was there. I never saw the inside of the ER again. They determined after several hours of sitting, while I was there, a gentleman was brought in by Roseell Fire Department, he was in a lot of pain, they did the same thing to him, he was sitting in the ER, took him out the stretcher and put him in a chair. He was saying, "I need to see a doctor, I need to see a doctor," and he wasn't seeing a doctor. A gentleman came in with a finger, was bleeding, blood was running down his arm, they made him sit there for like 15 minutes, finally, a nurse came out and said, "My God, you should be inside." And I'm sitting there looking, there's all these other people in the emergency room looking at this guy, and I'm sitting there thinking, "I could deal with this, because I've seen this before," but I'm thinking, "What are all these other people thinking?" They had to come and clean up the blood, in the emergency room they took him in. So, I said, "I was here for three hours, the doctor told me I need to have an IV for my dehydration." And I said, "Well, how long is that going to take?" "Oh, at least another two hours." I said, "I'm not staying another two hours, I said, "I'll go home and drink Gatorade." And the doctor said, "Yeah, do that, go drink Gatorade and water," and I left. And I walked out of it, and I thought, and my wife was at me, I said, "After all these years here, I'm going, is this what I want to come to again?" So, I hope, I hope that whatever you're doing is working, and I am a little bit concerned, because I think you need more room in that emergency room. There are a lot of people sitting outside that day, and they were seeing all of this going on. I can't imagine what was going through their minds about Alexian Brothers. That's not the Alexian Brothers I know. That's not the Alexian Brothers we know. It's changed, and we want to see it back to a good service hospital, people are taken care of in the right way.
Well, I'm sorry about the experience you had, and that is exactly right. We are committed to returning the service to what you expect. I think by creating that, an extra space for patients who don't need to be in the main department where the ambulances should be going, they can be seen there, and the ambulances will always have a room ready for that next ambulance run, so they don't have to go out to the waiting room. That's the goal.
Thank you. Michelle Musson? Okay, thank you. Okay, who would like to come on up, ask a question? Come on up, just, yep, come on up, sir.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for being here for the town hall. I have a very, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
How about now? All right. Thanks for being here. I have a very quick question. I just want to understand, when would the transition start for the maternity and delivery, moving from here to the half-minister? And when would that end? And do you guys take more, like, cases during the delivery process, or the transition process?
Yeah, I did not hear the last part, but let me, let me restate that. You asked, when would maternity services cease at Alexian Brothers?
Got it, got it.
So, as the mayor mentioned, we go, our expectation is that we would be on the agenda for the Health Facilities Review Board November 18th. They've asked us a series of questions, we've submitted the answers, we've been very forthcoming with our planning. So, if we, if approved in November, the requirement is that you must make the transition within 60 days of that notification. So, we're tentatively saying by the end of the year. But all that would have a lot of preemptive communication and notification. And then I don't think I heard the last part. So, we're continuing to deliver right now, we continue to deliver. But moms will be making decisions, physicians are making decisions, so it's possible that a mom that thought she might be delivering at Alexian Brothers around Thanksgiving says, "Well, I'll just plan my delivery at St. Alexis instead," and we'll be prepared for that.
So, it will probably start around 60 days from November?
From the date we get approval.
Approval.
Yeah.
There's no tentative date as of now?
There's no what?
Tensive to date?
Tentative?
Yeah.
Well, we have to, we, we, in our planning, we have a tentative date, because we do expect that we've answered all the questions for the Health Facilities Review Board, so we're working through those dates.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, just hold it, Steve. Yep. Next, who wants to come up next? Anybody else? Come on up, sir, come on.
Could you talk about the future of the area?
So, cancer-
This cancer area.
Yeah, so oncology care, cancer is an area we want to continue to develop and grow. As Dr. Bordeaux mentioned, we have neurosurgery, and so, neurosurgery does do some cancer care. We have some wonderful partners, again, independent groups that work with us at Alexian Brothers. We have a very robust radiation oncology program, we have a robust medical oncology program, but we, what we would like to add more of is surgical oncology. They're very specialized surgeons. You know, an, an ear, nose, and throat doctor does a lot of different things, but there are ear, nose, and throat doctors that do head and neck cancer treatment. We would very much like to be able to recruit more physicians for that type of cancer and other surgical cancers, because we do feel like our medical and our radiation oncology programs are strong, but we are, we are working to recruit that. And thank you for the question.
Uh, next, sir, come on up over here, Steve, come on up, sir.
Your people are all being brainwashed. It's not a good place to go. I couldn't wait, thank you. I couldn't wait to sneak out of there and have my wife drive me to Northwest Community Hospital, so I would get the proper treatment. The doctors I had were clowns. Okay. Right, okay. I wish, when we go in an ambulance, we had a choice. See, they wouldn't- Nope, they wouldn't do it to me. Yes.
I'm not interested in maternity. As a senior, I have lost my ENT, I have lost my pulmonologist, they have gone to other hospitals. I don't like to drive that far. How do I find out what's available to me at Alexian?
Yes, no, thank you. That is an excellent question. Some of the physicians who leave, like I mentioned, the ENT group, they are not our employees, they were independent and they make choices. We have to respond to those choices, and we need to continue to provide services that the community needs. So, then, when we bring in ENT doctors, that's exactly on us, is how do we make sure the community knows that service has returned to Alexian Brothers? And so, we need to be better partners in the community. I've spoken to Keith and others about a calendar of events, so that we can get our tables back out at your community events with a list of services, phone numbers, pictures of the doctors, here's where their office is, so that you know what we have. We need to do a better job of that, that came clear from the library, and we're committed to doing that as well, because pulmonary has returned, ENT is available, and yet, there are still questions about those services. We need to do that.
Okay, one more question. Many of us here have experienced the ER, I've had good experiences and bad, but I have a question, I like what you're planning to do in the ER and moving people along. When my husband came in by ambulance, he was terminally ill, they said he would be put in a room. There was no room for 17 hours. He, we laid in the ER room. What are you doing to expand the health care with the nurses and the doctors on the floors of the hospital?
Yeah, no, so, when we talk about why the ambulances can't bring a patient right into a room, it's either because we've backed up and there are patients from the waiting room waiting to get into those rooms, or, like in the example you provided, a patient has been admitted, but now there's no room upstairs. So, the efficient care that's being done on the inpatient side, to discharge patients appropriately, get that room cleaned and ready for the next emergency department admission, is another process that we've been working to clean up and improve on. So, part of that is a collaboration with the medical staff to treat patients appropriately as efficiently as possible. That means their tests come back in a timely manner, the doctors are rounding appropriately, and we're discharging appropriately. It's the ability to open up more beds when we need to at times, when the census and the volume of patients coming in is high, so that we always have a room available for the next admission from the emergency department. So, we call that boarding hours, the hours you sit there waiting, and we track that, and we have reduced that. That has not been the problem of why the ambulances can't get a patient into a room. It's not because somebody's been waiting to go upstairs, it's because we haven't brought in the patients from the waiting room, or those waiting room patients shouldn't have been, should have been seen quicker and discharged. So, we have improved that flow for inpatients to receive their care and be discharged in a, in a right amount of time and have that room available to the next patient, and so, those boarding hours- And so those boarding hours have been reduced significantly. Yes, yeah, the staff is, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question about the staff. Amanda Koon Ash is our CNO waiver hand. Amanda's done a great job. You know, post-COVID, we've all been very concerned about nurses leaving the workforce. We've got our HR leaders here. We've done a tremendous job recruiting nurses back into both of our facilities. In fact, we've got some very good retention rates of our nurses. And so I would like to say that we are in really good shape right now. I'm knocking on wood because, like, one of the things that could happen, you, we have one of our departments, three of the people got COVID, a very small department, they got COVID. We had to defer our MRI studies from one location to another. So there are always going to be unforeseen circumstances with people being sick, but we are very, we're, I feel like we're in much better shape recruiting, retaining our nurses. We're constantly trying to recruit physicians. And I do want to, we just have to be real about something. We never want people to wait in the emergency department. And what you all are describing truly makes us sad. It hurts our heart. We don't, we don't want to ever feel like people are not given the dignity and the respect, and it's not intentional. But if we have a very busy flu season, or God forbid, COVID and flu come at the same time, we will do everything we can to get you into a location, into a place, so that you can, you know, recover or get your treatment in a, in a dignified manner. And we're very committed to that. I hope the flu season, please do get your flu shots. We actually have flyers right here. I know everybody's got their opinions about vaccinations perhaps, but we're healthcare providers, and we want you to get your, your vaccinations, get your flu shots. So thank you for that.
Hang on, Steve. Steve, hang on a second. It does make me feel good, and hopefully everyone here, you're admitting you have faults.
Absolutely.
That makes, that's the first step. Admitting that there's things that have to be fixed. I appreciate, first off, I appreciate you apologizing at the start. That means a lot. And I appreciate you admitting you have faults. You know what the faults are, and you're working to fix them. Our goal is to get you and fix them fast. We don't want to be the patient tomorrow that's still waiting to fix them. You brought up real quick about tests. My understanding, I, you know, Polly, we talked about this, I've heard from numerous people, your radiology and testing result time is, I'll say politely, atrocious in cases. Sometimes a radiology result should be a day, and it's taking a week to 10 days. Is that being addressed? Is that one of the areas you need to fix?
Yeah, we, we've actually improved that significantly. It was atrocious for months, for many months. Two biggest issues when I arrived in April was fix that emergency department and address radiology. If you had a study, you were waiting a week for the result, and that's if you were healthy and outpatient and just had a regular study done. Imagine if you were also in the hospital waiting for your result to be read. It just wasn't acceptable. So this is a shortage of radiologists across the country, not making excuses. It's one of those areas in medicine right now that's very difficult everywhere. We brought in a new group that it took longer for them to hire enough radiologists to catch up to the studies that were occurring so that the results could be read in a reasonable amount of time. And it's just most recently, probably this week to last week, that they caught up. And so now the studies are being turned around in a day if you had it as an outpatient, immediately if you're in the, in the hospital. But it's taken to about this week for me to be able to say that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. I have specific questions about the emergency department, but not about waits and not about that kind of thing. My concern is, you know, someone's driving down 290, they see the blue hospital sign, right? And maybe they're pregnant, and maybe it's an emergent delivery, and maybe it's not a simple one that turns out happy, right? Maybe there's complications. Can you talk about what kind of resources, both physical as well as education, that will be provided for the ED physicians and the ED staff that are working there and receiving this patient as a walk-in or a drive-in, not by ambulance?
So right now, that's job one, and we're currently doing that with the staff. Emergency physicians are trained to deliver babies. If you've worked in a hospital, though, for 10 years that had OB upstairs and you hadn't, then it's time to go back to work with the OB department and the staff, for the OB staff to work with the ER staff, to look at the equipment we have. Do we have everything we need from the labor and delivery department down in the emergency department? And that's what's going on now. So there is a full plan, working on staffing, education, training, processes, and equipment that we're addressing currently to be ready. So I can speak confidently that should somebody mistakenly arrive in our emergency department and it's too late to be transferred to St. Alexis, that baby could be delivered at Alexian Brothers.
Okay, and where will we find this plan? Is that going to be available to the public and what the timeline is?
I, I can confirm for you that plans have already begun. The nursing staff has already begun work on a transition, and I've been in talks with Dr. Sanford, who's the head of the ER, and have been working on this on a daily basis and getting our resources. We will be training nurses, keeping some qualified staff to help, working with providers. The OBs will be working with the ED providers. We're gonna have some OB GYNs present at the hospital.
24/7?
Well, nobody's gonna be 24/7. It's called from home, but during the day-
What's the time for response?
During the day, they have their office. They're gonna be there.
Sure.
And there will be somebody who's 24 hours available. This is what happens in all facilities that do not have a labor and delivery. And I'm part of, I'm gonna be part of the on-call staff, I believe. So also believe it's our responsibility to work with the emergency room, to make sure that the providers are comfortable, to follow the law, basically, to evaluate the patient, make sure the patient is stable, make sure the patient can be transferred and to a higher level facility for the appropriate care. And if the patient is not stable, to be able to deal with it and call in. And I have been working with many resources and other emergency room physicians who handle this on a daily basis, basically getting their protocols and what they've done. There are some doctors that work with some hospitals that have LNDs and some that don't, and the differences between them. And so we're basically creating a plan. Nursing training has already begun, and we'll also have training for the providers. So it will be comprehensive. I hope that answers your question.
It doesn't. I asked about whether or not there would be availability to the public to see what kind of training, as well as what kind of physical resources would be present in the emergency department, should there be a need to actually deliver.
Yeah, I don't think that they'll have any problem making that public.
Great. Where can we find that?
In fact, I'll be personally-
Would it be online, or where would we find that?
I don't think we have that.
We're, you know, that's, that's an interesting question about putting our policies and procedures online for the public. I'm not sure the public would be able to interpret them. Here, here's what I would-
Some would.
What, you know what? I'd be happy to sit down. I think we'd be happy to sit down and walk you through the plan.
Okay.
I would say one of the things-
That'd be awesome.
One of the things that came up, I'm sorry? I'm, I'm sorry. I, that, that's a, I appreciate you calling that out. I, I meant that from the perspective of we use a lot of acronyms and terminology, so-
Google.
Pardon me?
We can Google it.
Right.
For those of us that don't know them.
If I, if I could bring-
But anyways, if you would be happy to sit down with me, I would really appreciate that opportunity. Who should I leave my information with?
We've got people right here.
Great. I'll do that. I'll write it down. And then my last question is about transfers. So you spoke earlier about ambulance transfers. You actually addressed the fact that you were, your son was stuck with a big bill. Members of my family have as well for pediatric transfers to go to St. Alexis from Alexian Brothers. Who's gonna bear the cost of that transfer when this mother and baby need to be transferred, should they need to be delivered, or even before delivery? Who's gonna bear that cost?
For the ambulance transfer?
Yes.
To the higher level of care? We are.
You're gonna bear that cost?
Yes.
But you don't bear it for pediatrics?
I can't speak to that particular issue. If you're going to an area of a higher level of care, I don't know what happened in that instance, and I'm happy, we're happy to sit down and talk to you, but that is the arrangement that we have created with the ambulance companies.
Which ambulance company?
We have several.
Okay.
We can take that offline as well.
Sure. What is the transfer team gonna look like?
So, so let me back up a minute.
Sure.
I would be, I would be surprised if there aren't people in here frustrated about the whole transfer process, and we've heard that. So we, we definitely want to make sure we address that. So if you've got those particular concerns, I don't know, Mayor, yours was many years ago, but anyway, we-
And it's pediatric, so you know, it's my, my grandson has asthma.
Absolutely.
They couldn't handle it at the hospital.
Right.
They had to take him, and my son said, I just drove him. I'll be glad to drive him. They said, you can't.
We understand.
I think you had to have a doctor-
Yeah.
-in an ambulance with them. Was that, does that sound right? Doctor or nurse had to be in the ambulance? Yeah. And, yeah, so, but again, you're saying now not to worry.
Yeah, I'm saying we need, so if, if you have that situation occur, we have a process. We want to make sure we address it. So I don't know how long ago that was, but absolutely, we can talk offline.
Okay.
But now take Polly up on-
And so who's gonna be on the transfer team for obstetrics transfers? Do you know who?
So the transport team can be different levels of care depending on what the patient needs. And the highest level, what the ambulance services usually offer is they put a nurse on the, on the ambulance ride.
A nurse is the highest level in the transfer team?
For, for obstetrics.
Even if it's a complicated, like, say, the patient, it's preeclampsia?
Yes. We would be using our ambulance services that are available to the community that, and they have different tiers of level of care. We currently transport pregnant women today, even to send them downtown, if you're sending patients downtown, and, and with that, that we, when they are transported, we add a nurse to the, to the ambulance.
Okay.
And you can take Polly up on the offer. Don't forget to give your name so she can explain. Okay, thank you.
Stay where I am. Oh, stand up. Oh, okay. Stand up. Good evening. My name is Herb.
It's on. Hold up your mouth.
God, I can't get it much closer. I had a question, and then just a couple of comments and some accolades, really. I was hospitalized in March, spent 10 days in the ICU, two days in the step-down ward. When I was in the ICU, I asked the question of one of the, one of the senior nurses there. I said, you know, my primary care doc, who I love, is in the hospital. I said, is there any way that he could come in? I mean, he works in the, yeah, he's in office. Is there any way he could come in and see me? Because I've been with all these specialists, great people, very knowledgeable, et cetera. And the nurse said to me, well, no, that's not possible. And I said, why, why wouldn't somebody in the hospital not be able to visit me in the same building, basically? Well, he doesn't have hospital privileges. And so I guess my question is, is this common? And I mean, is it, is it something legal? Or, you, I was just surprised that my primary guy couldn't come in for 10 minutes. I couldn't call him and make an appointment with him to come in.
It gets a little complicated, but this is probably the best answer. In the old days, certainly, your community doctor rounded at the hospital and saw patients in the hospital.
Okay.
Nowadays, and this is not that he couldn't, it was that doctor's choice. It's not like we don't allow him privileges, but what has happened in the changes of medicine is that primary care doctors have chosen to remain in the office to see patients, and they have what we call dedicated hospitalists who don't have a practice and just take care of patients in the hospital. That's what they do all day, all night, every day.
Sure.
And they work as a partnership. But oftentimes, we hear from the patient, they're being seen by the hospitalist. Now, the hospitalist, I would wish, would explain that very clearly. I am working on behalf of your doctor, who doesn't round in the hospital, but that communication is still gonna occur. I'll let that doctor know what's going on. But that doctor has chosen to stay in the office and has chosen not to be credentialed, what we call credentialed and privileged, to be allowed to write orders and see patients inside the hospital.
Okay. I did meet with, a hospitalist came in several times during my stay there, and very thorough, very professional. He just said, I represent the hospital. Okay.
So that's, that's, that's rules, state rules?
No, no, it's just the changes in medicine that primary care doctors have chosen to be more, they can see more patients in the office and take care of their patients in the community, instead of taking hours to round on one or two patients in the hospital. So they've split the role. They stay in the office, and these hospitalists stay in the hospital, and they don't have an office.
But if they wanted to, they could sign up and-
If they wanted to, they, they are welcome to-
Just, that's not common.
It's just the practice has changed.
It's gone, from the old days.
Pretty much. Some, there's still some that do, and we'll hold on to that forever, but it's getting less and less common.
Fewer.
Well, my, my concern was just that my primary care doctor, I have, I have no medical expertise at all, thank you very much. But my concern was that my primary care doctor was in the loop as far as meds, as far as the procedures that were being done, et cetera. And I just felt that he would get the information, but I'd rather he had it sooner as opposed to later. And that, that doesn't happen, but you've explained that well.
Does he, does he?
Ideally, he should receive everything that happened in the hospital right away-
Oh, he does? He gets that?
Through the electronic medical record, the discharge summary, the medications that you were given, everything that occurred in the hospital should go right to that physician via the medical record.
My event was in, not to go on. My event was in March, okay? I had a six-month wellness check with my primary care doc in June, and you're exactly right. He was privy to every, he asked me a lot of questions, but he was privy to-
Good.
...everything that had been done to that point.
Good.
Kind of segues into something. I've seen five or six different departments. At one time, I was six days in one week, seeing people. So, which was fine, okay? But here's my question. The databases, I'm not sure they're centralized enough because every time I went to see a new department, I had to pre, I had to register. I had to go through the registration process. I became on, I'm on a first-name basis with two of the, you know, the workers, Kyle and Juan, okay? So I, I guess my question is this, every time I went to the, well, every new department, let's put it that way, and I'm like, well, everybody, isn't everybody singing off the same sheet of music here? And I'm just looking at the common sense, why, why would I have to register at the lab when I have an order from a physician, and I'm already deeply embedded in the system? It just seems like a lot of extra work for the hospital and myself.
When we moved away from paper and went to electronic medical records, this country didn't choose one computer system. So your doctor is on one system that doesn't necessarily translate directly into the system at the hospital. And you're right, within the hospital, there might be several systems. So actually, the head of information technology is here with us, but I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I know-
No, that's okay.
-that Ascension across the country is looking at how we break down those barriers, fix the systems to either speak to each other or convert them to the same system. That's a big ask. It's, it's a long process because we got here in a long process of different systems being put together that aren't always speaking to each other.
Okay. I was referred by one specialist to another specialist who is off campus, and I went in there and had some paperwork, and I said, well, you know, is this sufficient? That office told me, well, we're not associated with the hospital at all. I said, well, how can that be? Because the Heart Function Clinic referred me to you guys. So they had, for whatever reason, they had no access to a lot of my records. I thought that was kind of strange.
So again, we talked about physicians that we employ, and we talked about physicians So again, we talked about physicians that we employ, and we talked about physicians who are independent, but see our patients. And those independent physicians have a choice of those different electronic medical records and are on a system that doesn't, that isn't connected with ours. Now, we have solutions. I'd love to know who that is, and if they wanted to become connected, to be able to see records, we could do that. So, I'd love to, you know, take that, you know, from you afterwards. But it is, it's a complicated process because of the different parts of technology.
I can only imagine. I had a blood draw on a Thursday. I saw the specialist on Monday, following Monday. They had no access to my blood work. So, not a big deal, but I called across the street, was fortunate to get somebody on staff there, and I said, you know, it'd be great if you could, you know, they, because they can't see it, I need to get this blood work over you. So, they ended up faxing it from their office to the specialist. It took a little time, but it worked.
We appreciate it, thank you. Again, they made it, they got better communications, they'll work on that. Anything different?
I got, I'll be quick, Mayor.
One more question, fair enough? One more?
Well, I want a kudos, too.
Kudos and one more.
Okay. So, you know what? I'll just jump to the kudos.
Thank you.
I'll just jump to the kudos. How about that? Okay. Disputing what was said earlier, okay? I had all this work done in March, and I have to, and it was a surprise, really a surprise. I, I went in for one test and wound up being put into the ER, et cetera, et cetera. But within 45 minutes of me being admitted to ER, the head of surgery, the head of surgery for the hospital and the cardiologist were, they were in my room, okay, there, and already getting me prepped. I had three procedures in eight days, and they were on top of it. The first minor problem was taken care of in the afternoon. The next big surgery was the next morning, eight days later, an ablation. They didn't miss a beat. I, I'm just, literally, they did not miss a beat. The staff, the ICU nurses, I don't know who we, who they report to, but whoever they report to, I can give you some names. These people were perfect. I even had a nurse stop in after her shift was over to just chat and see how, how I was doing, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate that. Heather?
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for coming and being willing to take our questions. I appreciate this is not a comfortable or fun or enjoyable evening for you. My name is Emily. I am the mother of a child cancer survivor. About a year and a half ago, two years ago, Ascension closed the primary care pediatrics practice, medical care group that was located on Beister Field. We weren't given much notice. And the paperwork that we received told us that our children's records and that their care was going to be transferred to the family practice across the street. Again, the practice, the doctor's name I was given was Rita Sahir, but however, she's my doctor, and I want to say that she's absolutely wonderful, so this is not a knock on her. When my daughter, whose record was supposed to be transferred and who has a complicated health history, became ill twice, two different times over the last year, and I called that practice, and I said, Ascension closed her primary care practice, and I was told that I could count on you guys to be her caregiver. They didn't know who she was. She was immediately sick, in the moment. She needed care that day, but it was not an emergency, and it was not related to her cancer experience. And I was given a wait time of weeks for an appointment, both times. And then I had to scramble, scramble, to find an, either an urgent care, and we ended up back at her hospital where her oncology care was, in the ER. When I asked the person who picked up the phone both times, if you can't take her today, and I need my daughter, who is a cancer survivor, to be seen and to receive care, and if the primary care practice, medical care group, had remained open, my experience had always been I could get in same day, they kept spaces available for sick appointments. Where should I go? If you cannot take my daughter, this is where I was told to go. Where should I go? And they couldn't tell me. They didn't have another phone number. They didn't have another doctor. They didn't have another practice. They didn't have anywhere. I was literally told by a very compassionate woman on the phone, I am so very sorry, but I do not know what to tell you. So I am incredibly concerned that you handle this transfer, this closing of services carefully, because this can have immediate and incredibly traumatic effect on the individuals that you are promising to continue care for, because you did not, for me or my daughter.
I'm, I'm very sorry to hear what you're saying, and I'm, I'm happy to meet with you offline, because with your feedback is how we figure out, how did we fail you? And I, I hope your daughter's doing okay, so I'm happy to exchange phone numbers and see how we can learn from this. And I, I'm very sorry.
Please make sure, ma'am, please make sure you give them, I want Polly, we'll follow up with you, I want to make sure she does. I apologize for what you had to go through. Go ahead, ma'am.
How is everyone? I'm not really good at speaking, so just bear with me. I wasn't planning on saying anything, I was just going to sit here and be quiet. As, I used to work at Alexion for 32 years. I was unfairly fired for not taking the COVID shot, worked a week and a half suspended, not getting paid, and text terminated after 32 years. I was just, I, I loved Alexion, but I would have died at the mail stand, standing there. Like, Lisa looks pale today. Yeah, Lisa's dead, but she's, I loved there. You guys got to make this hospital great again. I'm, I'm not into politics, I had to say that. But, but you have to make this, you have to make this hospital great again. It's, it's really bad, you guys. I cry every day how bad it's gotten. The hospital, the doctors, the, like, the hospitalists, they're like cavalcadeous. It's like, my sister was in the hospital, it wooed her, and then they asked her, do you want everything done if something bad should happen? I'm like, okay, she just came here for a backache and a possible bladder infection, and we're already putting on a euthanasia list? What is going on here? You guys have to make it back to the way it was, when it was great. You have to appreciate the healthcare staff, the healthcare staff. I'm telling you right now, I was there. They feel so unappreciative, even the doctors. You guys are putting in these protocols that are unattainable. It's not working. I mean, look at, I mean, look at how upset everybody is. I mean, I never, I never get upset, but I've been crying every day, because I'm so upset. And maybe get rid of the mandates? Because I'm telling you right now, I've been researching this COVID shot, and I cry every day.
Do the changes, the changes they recommended they're doing tonight, is that steps in the right direction?
No.
It's not?
It's not. It's going backwards. You have to listen to the people. You have to listen to, if you want to be successful, just like, and I hate this, I said it, and someone said, well, why did you go work at Costco? I'm like, because I like helping people, and I like working as a team, and I wanted, that's what I loved. I loved it, you know? But, like, the CEO from Costco said, if you want to be prosperous, you have to, your employees have to feel appreciated. And I'm telling you right now, I worked there 32 years, I got the virile veins to prove it. People are unhappy, the changes are horrendous. They're so bad. If you get a person, sorry, I'm shaking, but I don't really don't talk, but I do talk because I'm a ten. But, but if you, like, if you get a patient that comes in the ER, that's pregnant, cord around the neck, preeclampsic, a placenta abrupta, you cannot wait for an ambulance to come. You've got maybe possibly two dead people, the mother and the baby, because the, the mother's going to bleed out. I witness that with all the technology. A lady?
It's off.
Is that? But a lady, the mother died, the mother died in the OR. It was the most saddest day. I mean, you guys got to fix this back to the way it was. I'm, I'm serious. And the doctors are not allowed in the hospital, because my sister went to a family practice, her family practice, they're not allowed in there. And the ENT doctors, I worked with the ENT doctors, they were awesome. They're unappreciated. And you guys are putting in policies that are unattainable. They're insane. You guys, I am begging you, I mean, I cry every day. It's bad. It's bad. And I know you're, I, I couldn't do your job, and I just want to just scrub cases. I don't, I don't care about this, that's your guys' thing, but you guys, it's getting so bad. I, I, it's like, I cannot, an ER doctor cannot deliver a baby. I'm sorry. No. You need, no. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. You, you don't understand what goes into this. I mean, when they come in, I mean, it's like mayhem. I mean, it's like, it's like the Cubs won the World Series. I mean, it's crazy. People are running, things are on the floor, we're cleaning. I mean, you need anesthesia, anesthesia tech, you need like four nurses, surgical tech, the doctor, anesthesia, like surgical assistant, possible med student assistant. I mean, you don't have time, you need to bring it back. I, I'm just, you guys still understand.
That's why we're here.
I know, but it's just, it's, this is the same thing when I worked at the hospital, it was like all these empty promises. It's just empty promises.
Well, it's different this time, because we have a community involved.
Yeah.
It's not just one-on-one.
I hope so.
They're hearing what you're saying, and they're already making some changes, they got to make more. And what you're saying tonight, hopefully, and I know we go way, we go way back.
I'm pretty sure the mayor's going to hold you accountable to those, to those fixes.
The thing I worry about is that we always heard, oh, we're making changes, we're making changes. I'm like, okay, those aren't good changes. They weren't good. They're, they're not making you guys prosperous, and these are people's lives.
I want to thank you for your 32 years of service.
Thank you.
I do. I thank you, and I thank you for your comments. There is a lady in the back that has been waiting for so long, in the black, are you, there she is. She's been very, very patient. We'd be kind of been in the front of the room, let's get to the back of the room. Thank you.
I don't really need a microphone. I have a projector. Did you want me to use this?
Yeah, use it.
All right, hello?
You go ahead.
I just want to get us back on track. I do recognize the fact that Alexion is trying to do better, and I sympathize and empathize what everybody has been suffering. I'm sorry, but it brings me choked up, too. I just want to bring us back on track, because I came in here tonight, and Craig, thank you for answering one of my questions, when you asked if this was going to be the beginning of something, because I was so afraid of what's going next. I just want to know, what was the process in choosing to eliminate maternity delivery? I want to know what the process was to make that choice.
We don't make these decisions lightly. Multiple factors, data, trying to talk to a lot of different people. You know, I want to go back to your first question, what is coming next? We do our best to forecast and anticipate the future, we really do. It was a lot of, a lot of decision-making, and I, and it's, it's complicated in healthcare. So let's start with, we're, we're competing for clinical resources. The two hospitals are competing for nurses, the physicians that are independent, some are employed, some of them we know are going to stop delivering. We know that our, our deliveries at Alexion Brothers have declined over the past several years, and we really do try to make the decision with the patient at the center. I hear everybody's concern about moms that may arrive unexpectedly to the emergency department. We hear you. It's important to us. To imagine that that is not important to us, again, makes me sad. It is very important to us. So, there, there's a lot of processing, a lot of decision-making, but at the end, the reality is, we, we don't, we do not control all the physicians, we do not employ all of the physicians. So we have to be thinking about, what is the next phase of the physicians that will be serving our community? And at the end, it was, we can invest the technology, we can ensure we have the staff, we have all levels, as Aaron spoke to. If a mom comes in with a normal delivery, we're able to do it. But if in a minute, something changes, they have the expertise at St. Alexius to manage that complication. So we really do try to keep this at the center, it's part of our mission. We understand people do not agree. We hear you, we absolutely hear you. We, we continue to plan for the future, and that's what, that's how we got to this decision. Right. And you're- And you're- Yes, ma'am. You're very fortunate that you have a hospital across from the mayor's office. Many communities don't. We serve multiple communities, we're serving the needs of many communities. Again, seven hospitals in a 30-minute drive. So, today, the, you know, we, we are serving the needs of multiple communities. We hear you, we understand, this is a very passionate, very personal topic. We absolutely hear you.
And I'm going to probably say something I shouldn't. Let's be honest, they may get upset with me. It's about money. It's about money. Let's be honest. With that said- It's, well, that's what I'm saying. With that said, I'm not trying to dish them, because every hospital, I'm sure, is going through this. That's why Ascension's gobbling up hospitals, that's why Advent's robbing up hospitals. It's all now conglomerates. I said when I started, community hospitals don't exist anymore. Now it's big business. I'd say, the old brothers, how many remember the brothers at the hospital? Okay. The old brothers, that was, but they're not around anymore. They're dinosaurs, it's sad. And there's some, trust me, I had a daughter just went through a pregnancy issue, and went to, trust me, I know this too well. The problem is this, it makes sense what they're saying to a degree. How can you say you got seven maternity hospitals within, what, 30, well, 30 minutes? And you got towns out in Nebraska, you got to drive 120 miles to get the nearest hospital? So, I mean, you, to duplicate the services over and over, think how close St. Alex, or Northwest Community is to us. And then you got Alexion Brothers, then you got St. Alexis. So within 10 miles, you got three hospitals, or 12 miles. In today's economic world, I'm being honest with you, in today's money world, that doesn't make sense. And with the government stepping in and squeezing more and more, and cutting out what they pay, look what they're doing to Medicare, Medicaid and all that. They're squeezing the dollars. It doesn't make economic sense to do it. So there is some, I hate to say this, if my daughter's going to have a baby in the future, I'd like to go to Alexion Brothers a block from my house, then drive to St. Alexis, even though I like Mary McLeod, I don't like them that much, in Hoffman. I'd like to have Alexion Brothers, too. But it makes some sense to what they're saying. Give you an example. When I went in for my angiogram, my doctor and me go to St. Alexis. My sister's a nurse down in Georgia, said, you're an idiot, they don't do heart surgery there, you don't go for an angiogram, where if something happens, they can't fix it right away. What happened? In a snowstorm, they had to load me an ambulance and rush me to Alexion Brothers to get my bypass surgery. So, you can't have a heart surgery at every hospital, it doesn't make sense anywhere. So, it would have made more sense for me to go to Alexion, which is close, didn't work out that way, but that's a different story. If Alex, St. Alexis had the heart surgery place, it would make sense to go there. So, you got a children's hospital at Alex, St. Alexis, it's a children's hospital. I assume they have more care than a normal maternity would have. I may be wrong, am I, so, I mean, like I say, it'd be nice to keep it, trust me, I want to keep it at Alexion Brothers as much as anybody does. I say, all four of my kids, eight of my 10 grandkids, born at Alexion. I like that. I'm selfish, I want everything at Elk Grove. But there's some logic financially. I don't want to see a hospital go bankrupt, because they want to offer everything to everybody, and they couldn't make it work financially. I want to keep Alexion Brothers going. I don't want to see that hospital go. I want to see it keep going. I was, I, I plan on being there to my last days also. So, I understand what they're saying, but they don't want to say, but I'm sure they'll agree, money's a lot of driving force and everything, unfortunately. It's unfortunate. That's why I want to know what their plans are for the future. If they have to move everything, tell us. Like they said, they moved surgeries from St. Alexis to Alexion Brothers years ago. I'm fortunate they moved it before I needed it there, when I was there. I wish it was still there, I wouldn't have had, gone to ambulance here. So, I understand what they're saying. I may not like it either. But it may not be realistic, let's be honest, it may not be realistic. That's why I want to hear their plans, how they're going to address. Like the emergency room, that's my biggest concern. That's life-saving. Like you talk about babies coming in and around umbilical cord, Michelle's second one had that problem, umbilical cord around her neck. I know what you're talking about. It's a term, I don't know, but I know what it means. So, that's why I want to hear what they plan to address these issues. And here you expanding the emergency room, makes me happy. For years, we were promised, Elk Grove was promised, they're going to build a new emergency room. They're going to build a new, expand it, modern one, not the outdated one. I'm disheartened to not build a new one, but I'm glad to hear you are looking to expand it to meet the needs, because people bitch at me all the time. Mayor, I had to wait 30 hours to get a room. What? What? I was done the emergency room, but they couldn't get me a room upstairs. So at least they're going to have better. And like Steve said, where's Steve? He had to sit in that chair a couple of weeks ago instead of being... That's not right. So we want to hear what they're going to do to change it. I'm not happy with removing maternity at all. But it's going to happen. Unfortunately, money. How are they going to address it? You bring up a good point about a baby comes in, the situation, like you said, they need to have an answer, right? Are they going to say that person's like, before they can get them to St. Alexis? They may not have time to go to St. Alexis. So I'm glad to hear you bring it up. I'm glad doctors talking about, he's going to be on call, you're going to have the expertise to handle that kind of situation. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
So let's find out how they handle it. So again, we're here tonight to bring up questions about what's going to happen and how they're going to address our concerns. Radiology, I know is someone's big concern. To go out here, they admit they had a problem. They're fixing it. How are you going to fix it? When are you going to fix it? That's what we want to know. I'm sorry, I got my soapbox. Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. Great words. On an upbeat, I just want you people to know that we are blessed because we have people like you serving at Alexion Brothers Hospital. My defibrillator skips a beat every time I go past the hospital. Hate to see that right in my own backyard. And all the work that you folks went through to get your education, the late hours, the intensive care that you went through, and to choose that career to help us have longer, better, healthier lives is amazing. And we should close the evening on an upbeat. If you get really excited, can you tell us some things that are in the plans for the next five years for Alexion Brothers? We're not going to shut down. We're not going to sell the building. We're going to be alive, and we're still going to help people live here in Elk Grove at a much higher rate. Thanks again, folks, for all you do. You're a blessing to us all.
Thank you. My name's Julie Mortensen. I've been a resident here for 52 years. My ENTs are the ENTs you were talking about. I have actually gone to Munster, Indiana to see him. And I miss him tremendously. But I go back to Loyola, Dr. John Leonetti, who did four or five surgeries on my left ear and a couple of surgeries on my right ear. And I don't feel safe going to Alexion Brothers. I know this isn't a good note to end on, but I had my rotator cuff surgery done at Loyola. I had my other ear surgeries done at Loyola, because I know that the doctor I want to see is going to be there. He's going to be on call, or I know who is on call. You're telling me, and telling all of us, and especially with maternity, there's going to be doctors that don't belong to the practice? That I... When I had my youngest son, who's now 49, I went and I saw the five doctors that were in the practice. And I knew that when I had that baby, I may not see the doctor I really wanted to see, but that was the way it went. Well, you know, you keep saying, doctors don't want to come. Well, why? I have all kinds of doctors at Loyola I can see. Well, you know, what's... And I'm 72 years old. So what's going to happen to the hospital in 10 years? You know, I have my cardiologist here at Alexion Brothers, so hopefully I'll be safe there. But it's like, how do we know that when we come to the emergency, we're going to be taken care of? You know, you... And no timeline. You've given us really no plan. You said, "This is what we've done." And then you talk about, "Well, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that." Well, when are you going to do that, and how are you going to do that? We need more specifics than just, you know, a screen, one screen. And, you know, we don't want to sit down with you individually. We want to know the plan for Alexion Brothers so that we, as patients, as community, know that we can depend on you.
So again, we were talking before about physicians who are either employed by the hospital or health system, and those who are just independent. Your physician in Indiana, I don't even... Dan, we know who he is. Phenomenal ENT doctor. His group was an independent ENT practice. We did not employ them. Their decision for them, they all went into separate parts of the state, and he chose to go out of state. Really, he was on staff at a number of hospitals that weren't related to each other. That was their practice. I would have loved to have kept them. I was an intern in his office, learning ENT from him. That's had nothing to do really with Alexion or Ascension. I'm not making excuses, it's just I'm trying to explain the difference. Correct? Right? Right? Because we didn't... Right. Right. Yeah. It's such a confusing idea. We didn't employ them or pay them. They... When they joined Resurrection, Resurrection wasn't even a part of Ascension or Alexion Brothers. So they chose to have these disparate practices in different hospitals as independent doctors working on their own. And I know it's confusing, because for you, it's the same. I go to my hospital, I see my doctor, I don't understand what's the difference. It's a subtle difference. When we employ the doctor, they work for us, they have a contract to provide service to our hospital, their salary is paid by us, that's a doctor we employ. But at the same time, right next to that doctor could be an independent doctor. He makes, or she makes their money by the insurance companies and their own work, and it has nothing to do with the hospital.
They just rent space from you.
Yeah, they just have the space, and that's where they choose to see patients, because they believe in the care that the nursing staff and everybody else in the hospital provides, and that's where they want their patients to be at. So yes, everybody's got rights to practice there, but some we may hire and pay, and others may just prefer to do it on their own and make their own money. It's a subtle difference, but that's the difference there. But your point, I think, is similar to a point that was made earlier. The services that we've brought back, we haven't communicated to you that they're there and they're available, in whatever fashion. We employ them, we have doctors who aren't employed. If they're choosing to practice at Alexion Brothers, we haven't done a good enough job to make you aware of that, that yes, there are ENTs, yes, there's pulmonologists, yes, there's orthopedists.
So even though they left, you're saying...
There are others.
Because that was a big... Especially that pediatrician group, because both my daughters used that pediatrician for their kids. She was a woman pediatrician. She left. Did anybody know the one I'm talking about? Huh? Yeah, everyone knows the doctor. That... A lot of people must have gone to that doctor, because I've heard from a lot of people on that. So that doctor group, that pediatrician group, were they employed by the hospital, or were they independent?
Before my time. I can't answer.
Don't know?
I can't answer that.
I don't know if anyone knows. Being employed by the hospital. Okay. So Ascension made a decision to not keep them, you're saying. Okay. Probably came down to this. That... Now, I know we kind of smile and say, "It's a bad thing," but we have to be honest, it's the world today. The world today is, all the hospitals are part of groups now. You got Northwest, you got Ascension, you got Advent. Who else? There's like three or four real big ones gobbling all the hospitals up. And it's unfortunate, because you don't have that local control you once had. I mean, you know how many people came to this board and say, "Why isn't the village by the hospital?" You know how many people came to us? I said, "I'm not going to run a hospital. I get sick at sight of blood and needles. I couldn't do that." But what I'm saying is, it'd be nice to do that, but it can't be done. That's why today we're here, to find out. One thing is like radiology. You told us what happened, how you fix it. Emergency room, other things. I know people are anxious. I'm anxious to get it done quickly. I'm sure you will be. So, okay, next question, Steve.
Hello?
So briefly, I mentioned before, I am a private practicing OB-GYN. I am not hired by the hospital. I choose to bring my patients to the hospital. I choose to practice at St. Alexis. I could go anywhere I wanted to at the drop of a hat. I have privileges at Northwest Community. I have always chosen to do probably 90% of my business at St. Alexis, because that is the first hospital I joined coming out of residency, and that is the hospital that has given me the most support and help. And I like the staff, and I like the hospital. It feels like a home to me. There are plenty of doctors now that we all started out in private practice, and that was the primary way that doctors had their own practices, and they chose what hospitals they wanted to practice at. Then we went into this phase of, there are generations of doctors now that don't want to own their own practices. They don't want to manage the business of being in medicine by themselves. They want to be employed by someone else. So they've chosen to say, "I want you to employ me," whether that's a private practice hiring them not to be a partner, or a hospital system hiring them to work for them in the hospital system. So there are different models for medicine, and it's very mixed up now, just to kind of explain that a little bit further. Dr. Cologney is a hospital-employed or Ascension-employed physician, so we both do different things.
Well, now, let me ask you real quick, I'm sorry. What about Dooley? Dooley, is that just a big giant group of doctors? Because I know they gobbled up a lot of doctors.
So the third parties of things that have come into play are venture capitalists. Venture capitalists are companies that used to invest in buying up other businesses and making them work for them to earn money. Venture capitalists in their heyday would pay the people who owned the company money to buy the company, put money into it to build it up, and then sell it off to somebody else. Dooley has changed names multiple times in the way that it was created, but it started as a venture capitalist that came in and said, "We're going to purchase all these doctors' practices so that we can consolidate everything under one heading." So similar to being a hospital-owned physician, these are the Dooley Company-owned physicians.
Okay. So they're like... Because I see they got like a medical care unit buildings down in DuPage County. Because this was originally part of DuPage County group, right? That's where Dooley came from?
Mm-hmm. It used to be DuPage Medical originally, and then Dooley is another venture capitalist group that bought them from DuPage.
So that's another group of doctors. They all work for Dooley. They're not tied to a hospital, they're tied to Dooley. Dooley ties to hospitals?
Dooley is generally tied to Central DuPage.
Central DuPage. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Kaitlin Krollicki. Mayor Johnson, thank you so much for facilitating this tonight, and Ascension, the whole board, everybody here, thank you for being here to filter the questions and provide some clarity for everybody here tonight. I'm a lifelong resident of Elk Grove Village, and I've been a labor and delivery nurse at Ascension Alexion Brothers for 10 years now. And we do have quite a few nurses and staff that have been at the hospital. So another like high-note positive thing, how many nurses have been at Alexion for 20 years? Raise your hand. Yay. I know this is labor and delivery. How about 30 years? There's a hand over here and here. It's amazing. And this gaggle here, like I said, is part of a work family that has been in women and infant services for all that time. They've not worked pretty much anywhere else. I don't think you have. And this is a real home. I couldn't imagine working in a hospital, getting out of nursing school, and I didn't, in fact. But it was when I went to a job fair at Alexion Brothers. The director at the time, she opened, made a position for me, and it worked out. And now I just couldn't imagine working in a hospital without this fantastic group of nurses. And the work that's done there is truly invaluable. It's important. It has a place in this community. I know we cited about 6% of Elk Groveans deliver there, but there is a greater area that does deliver. And there's a lot of concerns. There's so much to say, too much to say tonight. There'll be a lot that'll go on public comment filed with the state. But with that, your application, this is a question now, to expand the NICU due to increased census and been on bypass quite a bit, is proposed to take two years. So why close now? Why not wait for that expansion to be complete? Because we are concerned about our volume. We've been documenting our census live with St. Alexis Census. And there are, gosh, weekly, we note that there wouldn't be beds for the moms that would be Ascension group or the providers that would be going to St. Alexis to deliver. There wouldn't be beds for them. They'd be like those ER patients, just having babies in the hall, though. That's what we envision. I know there's a plan to expand antepartum on another floor. If that's true, that's not quality. You should have those patients on the same floor as your OR, that you pride having an anesthesiologist on to be ready for that emergency. Do you imagine having an emergency going into an elevator now?
Do you want... I'm sorry. Do you want them to answer?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm so sorry. I could go on. I'm going to take the time to do it, because we're here. This is what it's for.
Who wants to... Anyone want to answer the question?
So why take two years?
Right.
Why not... We have six intensive care beds for babies. Why not share some of that space so these babies that go on bypass don't have to go to Maywood? They can just come to Alexion Brothers and eat beef.
So Caitlin, one of the reasons we have been able to stop having to go on bypass related to NICU census is that we have actually created additional NICU bed space that is open and available right now, and we're servicing our community with those beds. And then what we applied to the state for is an expansion of our licensed beds for the Level 3 status. And then we're expanding the Level 2 beds on... in a different space to even be able to handle additional capacity. So as we were running into the bypass situation related to the NICU beds, we internally were able to utilize some space in some beds that we were not filling with patients to create additional bed space for the NICUs, and that's what we're using now. And subsequently, we've been able to stop any bypass needs and continue to be able to support both inbound transfers and additional deliveries.
So you're saying...
That is good news.
Hang on. You're saying the bypass... See, that's what I think a lot of us heard.
Yeah.
A lot of them were being bypassed out, and everyone got nervous, said, "If you close Alexion, all those babies go in there, and you're already bypassing." You're saying you fixed the bypass?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But now, okay, so we've got this influx of volumes of moms. Where are moms going to go if they don't have beds?
Right. So as you've mentioned, you've watched our board. We are also looking...
No, it's like a daily thing, not watched.
Yeah, it's okay.
Because we're concerned. You know, we want to bring information to you to point out things that you might not be looking at, like in our view, that we can feel and see and know the impact that it'll have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
So as you watch how we utilize our space and utilize birthing rooms. We actually have 14 birthing rooms at the hospital, but we're also using that as pre-op and post-op. So for those in the room, when you're having like a cesarean section, a surgery, we are utilizing our birthing room space right now, because we have flexibility and have extra empty rooms every single day to be able to do that. Whereas in, I have additional space, PACU space, that we are not using, that we are going to operationalize to free up all of those birthing rooms to be able to handle some of that increased capacity coming in.
So you're saying you have enough room capacity to handle whether it's NICU, going in for, what do you call, cesarean, or all that? You've got the rooms to handle, and she said you got enough rooms for the mothers?
Correct.
So you have the capacity of St. Alexis right now to handle...
Yes.
Yeah. And that sounds like a lot. Yeah, and that, that sounds like a lot, and that's one of the reasons why I'm one of the 11% that aren't continuing on with Ascension, because I've had the experience to have worked with a well-oiled machine. We know what's going on with each other, our patients, we're there to jump in and help at any given moment. And I've been to the hospital, I've toured, I interviewed. I chose not to go there because I knew right away how segregated the staff is. And having, I know nurses that have went there now, some currently work there, many have left because they don't feel safe, especially the new grads. I know competing for resources has been brought up. Well, the retention, Polly, I know you've noted, was 90%. That's great for your new hires, new grads, but that might be because they stayed for the year to get the bonus and then jump ship. I think we're the quality staff you're looking for at St. Alexis, and I really hope it can work out, but I do hope you also take a good look at how you treat your staff, how you take care of them, invest in them, because I don't see that happen, have been happening for quite some time.
Can I ask, are you ladies the ones that chose not to go to the new hospital? Or some of you have, some of you chose to go to St. Alexis?
I think most of everyone here has.
If I'm asking two personal questions, just saying, I don't want to answer, I respect that. I'm just curious where you're coming from. That's my only question.
Yeah.
I signed the form that we had to fill out, we had a deadline to fill it out. I signed the form saying that I was going to go. I look every day for a new job.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this question. I'm not playing, trust me. Polly tell you, Julie down there tell you...
Never trust someone that says, "Trust me," Mayor Johnson.
Julie will tell you, I'm probably one of the hardest people. Julie and I have had some arguments like you wouldn't believe on the phone, because trust me, I'm watching the whole picture here.
No, no.
Because hospitals, important for us. My question is this, you heard what they said, I want to, I'm going to get into, I don't care if you're upset. You heard what they said about expansion, how they're trying, you just heard, I don't understand at all what she said about this bed for this, this bed that, we're transferring here. I don't understand that. But I'm saying is, take out the nurse, take out, are they telling them, what they're saying they're doing physically for rooms and for patients, all that, does that sound like it can cover the needs they have? Because my question could be this, why not try what they're doing?
Nurses that currently work there say it's chaos.
Okay, but I'm saying, try it and see if it works, and if it doesn't work, then you come back and say, "Hey, I tried your system at St. Alexis. It sucks. It don't work. We're out. We're leaving." I mean, you know, to shoot down something, because here's the sad part, I think, and I'm not happy about, I told you, my daughter's, there's a block from me in Elk Grove, three blocks from us, going to have another baby. I want to go to Alexian, but the bottom line is this, the change is coming. I hate to say that. I don't think it can be stopped. It's all, it's all driven by the big world nowadays. My question is this, why not be part of the new solution and make it work? Give it a try. If it doesn't work, then you get up and say, "You know what? I tried your new solution. It didn't work. It sucks." Then you got more of a leg to stand and argue about. But they are trying to expand this, hang on, Dr., to expand the stuff to meet the needs. You give it a try and see. I mean, if you're telling me now, "Nope, what he said or what she said is completely wrong, it's dangerous, what they're doing there," well, then that should be brought out. But if it's just something, it's something new and different, and you haven't tried it yet, it might work, I'm just throwing that out. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I know, it's a lot. This is really rough, and, you know, it is disheartening. We've, we've heard that this isn't about money, but like you've said, Mayor Johnson, we know it is. We know it's the bottom line, and it's really sad because you're considered a nonprofit, and you're, you're in place in the community, like forget the other seven hospitals. A lot of our patients come here because it's where they can go, and we're not going to be there for them anymore. And that's my greatest concern, is the people that won't be served. We've touched on the people on the highway that see the big blue H. This is big for me right now, the big blue H, the hospital sign. If you're pregnant and you see that sign and you have an emergency, and you don't know they have maternity services, you need to know. What are we going to do about that? We need some reform on those signs indicating, at least our big blue H, a stork with a line across it in a circle, because women need to know that they shouldn't go there and drive whatever it is up to northwest or the closest hospital. Let's face it, everyone, let me refer to my notes. We are so central, we know this, to O'Hare, we had a patient come in right off the plane recently, Woodfield Mall, especially around the holidays, bags are breaking all over the place, they come right to us. These are people that haven't established care with our hospital, but they need our service. Bussey Woods, we just had a baby shower, transferred right over to us, emergency C-section right after that. So, come on, guys, we've got 53, 90, 290, 390, 355, people traveling, major emergencies.
So, you're saying what the doctors said about how they're going to do deliveries, you're saying they can't do it? What they're saying is not right?
It's not right.
They can't deliver the babies?
It's not right, and I would love to know how the ER staff truly feel about this. I mean, we know, but... Dr. Coloney?
Caitlin.
Yes.
Thank you. I, I think you, you know what you're talking about, and these should be concerns, and they are concerns that have been expressed and identified and worked on, and I'm going to tell you one thing, without the nurses from Alexian Brothers, yeah, this can't work. They're phenomenal. They're phenomenal, and, and it's been an honor to work with you, you know, during this year that I've been chairman. I don't think they can do it without you guys, but I would ask you to consider, because this is still our community, it's still our system, and you guys are phenomenal, and you say, "Well, there's chaos, there's this." It's a high-volume place.
They filed low utilization on their application.
Part of chaos is not having experience. I don't think that's an issue with the nurses that I've worked with. Experience is worth a lot, and, and it calms down situations. I think you're identifying, and the reason why you know the problems is because you have experience, and the reason why you know it is needed, I agree that we can't do without you guys.
You're admitting, you're validating why this shouldn't happen.
But I, I think it's going to happen, and this is my personal plea to people to give it a chance. You guys are incredible. I agree, and, and I think that certain factors like chaos and concern high volumes, I don't think you guys know how excellent the nurses at Alexian are, and I think they understand how many times I've made it clear to them that they need to keep you guys, and that, so, I get corporations are never going to feel warm and fuzzy, but all of our concerns that you guys have brought to me, and I've brought to them, they said, "We can do that." I want you to treat the nurses with respect. We can do that. I want you to make sure that they don't have to apply like there's some brand-new employee. We can do that. I, I feel that everything, so all these concerns, ambulance, transfers, some very important points, we're going to do the best we can. I think we can do better with the experienced nurses that are at Alexian Brothers. I hope that you can help out, but I understand your concerns, and they're all very valid.
Thank you. You are asking for help from people that don't support this decision, but ultimately, what do nurses do? They still keep showing up, even though working in healthcare today is, is an abusive relationship. So, I, I really, I hope we can help, but this decision was still made, I think hastily, is that the word? Or without much consideration? Now, it seems like you're going to scramble for a plan by November, December. It doesn't seem like you got started on it, because you don't have our help yet, and we know that some of your doctors have reached out to other providers for help at other hospitals. So, I really hope this comes together quick for the safety of our community.
Will you ladies, let me ask you, will you ladies be willing to work with a doctor to try to make this transition work? Would you be willing to work with them? If they are fair to you, would you be willing to work with a doctor and do this plan?
I personally wouldn't, because I think Ascension's gone too astray from their mission. I don't stand, that's why I'm the 11%, one of the 11%. You just don't. Again, lifelong resident, patient, I'm a volunteer at the hospital, I just don't feel it, and it's really sad.
Would you be willing, would you be willing to do it not for Ascension, but for the people of the community?
For the people in the community, and maybe the next hospital system that comes in, maybe, but it...
That's what my hope would be, if the nurses, if the ladies would be willing to work with them. I know, but undercover may not work on this, they know them.
Oh, that's okay.
But if you ladies would be willing to work, I think the doctors reaching a handout, am I right, saying, join?
That sounds lovely, I just...
I know Caitlin's, you know, made her decision, but I think she would still help us to transition, and she's phenomenal, and she's representative of the nurses at Alexian Brothers.
Thank you. I really do care, but as you know, as Polly might, you might say, I'm passionate, I'm passionate, and I'm upset. I'm very upset. I don't believe this is the right thing.
There's no question, the way Polly rolled it out sucked. No question. She admitted it, she said she saw, no, it did. And she admitted it, she apologized. You move on, if someone makes a mistake, you don't beat them to death. When they admit they made a mistake, they reach out to say, "Now, we made a mistake, we know we made a mistake, how can we work together to move forward?"
Yeah.
The bottom line is, much as I want to see Alexian Brothers keep maternity, I'd give anything to it. We've done. It's not going to happen. So, I want to make sure whatever is going forward is the best for our, my community. I want to make sure it's the best for Elk Grove.
Me too.
And we need, you're an Elk Grovean, I know, once it's in your blood, it never leaves. So, your help, instead of turn your back and walk in, yeah, they kicked you, they kicked you a lot, but instead of turn your back, turn forward and say, "Hey, you kicked me, but let's see if we can all work together." I think the doctors' offer is a great way to at least try and see if we can make the best of it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, there's really great, great providers, great staff.
I'll just add, I think we've lost some traction, and I want to just respond, because I've worked for 25 years in the trenches, in the emergency departments, I don't need a ride-along, I'm there, and I've only worked for Catholic Healthcare. And I know I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for everybody that's up here and all my colleagues who are mission-driven, and we are all mission-driven. Our hands are not tied, and Ascension is committed to our hospitals. So, I want to just clear that up and say that we can, I'm speaking, I am sure, for all of us here. In addition, I, we have got experts who are going to make this transition happen safely and not put our community in harm. I just want to make that clear.
So, what happened to the transparency with the people doing this work? It was cited in your application that working clinicians in this department were consulted. Who were they? All of our OB providers that deliver at Alexian Brothers were not even informed of this closure until July 9th. They had no idea this was happening. They found out from the nurses, from the news. I think that's pretty important, that that was cited with the state, and it didn't happen. And there's, there's some other misinformation in the application that, I'm not going to go over here, but it's going to come up soon. You know, this is an issue of, of trust at this point, you know, with the lack of transparency without working with us, because we could have made this a center of excellence for low-to-moderate-risk birth. Instead, you're going to cram everything in one building, and again, it's just not appealing, and it doesn't sound safe to me, and not the experience that I would want personally. I would like a more personalized approach to care from experienced nurses right at Alexian Brothers. That's what patients that have delivered at both hospitals come back to us saying. They preferred their experience at Alexian Brothers. I wish they were here tonight. Again, maybe just the final... Oh, and competing for resources and retaining physicians, it's been brought to our attention that you are concerned possibly of not being able to accommodate the deliveries coming from Alexian Brothers, and discussing with a provider, maybe more, that they should consider seeking privileges to deliver elsewhere, which I think that's illegal. But what do you say to that, telling a provider to consider deliveries elsewhere due to not being able to handle their volume?
The specific example you're giving, the provider asked me to help her get privileges at the hospital, so that was just me.
She already has them.
So, no, she does not. But we don't need to get into the details. We're working with each provider...
It is more than one provider.
To help them decide if they'd like to be at St. Alexis, we'll make that work, and if they choose to have another facility to be able to deliver at, we're helping them do that as well.
Anything else?
It depends on the physician and where they would like to practice.
All right, I'm just going to wrap this up. So, I mentioned the misinformation in the application. There's been intimidation, making multiple providers feel like they have no voice, and that there's potential they may even lose their job. You've even tried to censor questions for this evening, which again, I'm pretty sure is illegal. I just want to sincerely ask, why should we trust you? Why should the staff trust you? Why should this community trust? This decision is truly in the best interest of our health, safety, or humanity.
It's unfortunate that the trust with a group... It's unfortunate that the trust with a group of nurses is where it's at. 89%... What is the number of nurses, Amanda? How many nurses are, how many nurses are at Alexian Brothers? 65 nurses. This is, this is a group that we certainly respect, and as Dr. Coloney said, so, we have multiple work streams, we have nurses involved, and so, we, we need to spend more time with you all, making sure you feel involved, that your voice is heard, and, and we will do that. We will do that.
Thank you. It, it really should have happened ahead of time, and I know, Dr. Burdo, you're no stranger to closing these departments, so the next one you close, please make sure you do this
My name is Janet Ford. I'm a lifelong member of the Elk Grove community. I've been affiliated with Alexian Brothers for 25 years as a labor and delivery nurse, and now as a OB-GYN provider with an independent OB-GYN group. I would like to know, and nobody's explained why everybody's so certain that this closure will take place. The state of Illinois has not approved it yet, and as we all know, this is, this decision to try to close the OB unit is not a good decision. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the, for the providers, it's not good for the nurses. Nobody is benefiting from this closure. It is not a good idea, and if the state of Illinois is honest and doing its research properly, they will not approve this closure. So, I cannot even understand why a huge entity would proceed with all these maneuvers and dismantling of the OB unit when the decision isn't even made. So, that leads me to think, do you intend to close regardless of what the state of Illinois says? Do you care what they think? It's not a good decision. Everybody in this room knows that it's not a good decision. There's nobody benefiting from this. So, it does, makes no sense whatsoever, and to be dismantling labor and delivery and offering people jobs and doing tours and doing all this rigmarole before the state has approved it makes no sense unless you have, you know, intentions to close regardless of what the state says, and pay your fine, and move on, and, you know, just leave everybody in the cold. And then, secondly, as far as...
Caitlin, can you, can you answer a question? If the state says no?
Yeah, what are you going to do if the state says no? Because if they're, if they're doing their righteous work, they will say no.
Okay.
We're going to continue to work with the state. We're having, we have an application, we've responded to the questions. We need to have a plan, because it would not be a great idea to not have a plan, and we'll continue to work with the state.
But you're driving all the staff, you're driving all the staff out, so...
Hang on, hang on. So, you say, if the state says no, you wouldn't just close it, you would lay it away? You can't do that, can you?
No.
She can, and she will, she's said it out loud to everybody.
Okay.
She's going to take the fines.
Okay. So, okay, so you said, just answer, is yes, if it's no, Polly, it's no then.
So, there's a process.
Right.
So, if you remember, I said earlier, if you get a yes, you have 60 days to close. So, anticipating that we could possibly get a yes, we have a plan within 60 days. We're going to continue to work with the state and see how that all plays out. Let me say this, physicians are going to make decisions, moms are going to make decisions. So, we're going to keep delivering babies, but when people start making decisions, whether physicians go elsewhere to work at another health system, or moms decide they, like today, they say, "I'm going to deliver at St. Alexis," we've got to be anticipating all those plans.
Well, you're trying to scare all the staff into thinking that that's their only option, so therefore, when they all choose other places of employment, or then the unit will not have enough staff, you'll have to have agency, and then you'll have to say, "Oh, sorry, we can't stay open because it's not safe anymore, because we've, you know, scared all of our staff into thinking that there's nothing left here before any decisions by the state has been made." This sounds very illegal to me to be intimidating the staff into other positions... This sounds very illegal to me to be intimidating the staff into other positions when nothing has been approved yet. Why put all this money, effort, time, resources into this without state approval? That should have happened first and everything else should have followed if anybody was doing any logical thinking, caring about the community, about the staff, about the physicians. And as being part of a private physician group, I can tell everybody in this audience that the private OB-GYN people on staff at Alexian Brothers have not been warmly invited to bring their patients over to St. Alexis due to the fact that they cannot handle the increased volume of more patients. So this whole thing from top to bottom makes no sense whatsoever. So it's very shady.
Okay. Thank you very much. Steve, I want to see if some, there you go. Thank you, ladies. Don't feel pressured. You're the first one. Get applause before you ask the question.
My name is Zach Axelrod. I am a physician assistant that works with the largest general surgery group at both Alexian Brothers and St. Alexius. And I'm wondering if you've thought about the effects that this is going to have on all of the other departments in the hospital. When you are closing the labor and delivery unit, that means you're going to have to get rid of anesthesia at Alexian Brothers as well. And I know from working in the operating room, waiting for anesthesia is a very common experience. This will result in delays of care rippling throughout every single department in the hospital. I, I, I would like to know, you know, I mean, I was 45 minutes late today because I had to stay late because I knew there would be not enough staff in the OR to, you know, for someone else to do the last case. I, you know, I, I want to know what is being done, you know, not just from their unit, but for all the units.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. And actually, you bring up exactly part of why some of this is happening. We're not reducing anesthesia. And in fact, this will allow us to continue to use our anesthesia resources to provide for the other services that right now are stretched. So that was a meeting we've been having with anesthesia to look at these points of service. How many anesthesiologists do we have? When you don't need to go and be sleeping here all night for labor and delivery, can you continue to use that resource in the operating room? So this is all about not making money, but spending what we have wisely and giving us the ability to utilize our resources to the maximum potential.
Well, in that same vein, if you're going to be, so Alexian Brothers, which like we have to increase. So sure, it proves up and the side is there, but you're going to need more at St. Alexis.
Correct.
So it seems like it would just be transferring from Alexian Brothers to St. Alexis, is that how?
Different groups?
Yep.
St. Alexis is handling their anesthesia. They anticipate the volume change.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I just leave behind you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ben. Just like a, a quick thing. Again, we're, of course, like we're feeling some anxiety about the move and all that. So kind of like when we have an anxiety or like worried about something, we overdo it. So why not just like, let's say, like it's the move of the department from one hospital to the other. So like, let's actually move all the beds, move all the nurses, move like even the instruments, the cleaning lady, everything to just like feel safe that the whole thing, it moves to the other hospital with the same number of beds so they can accept the volume and accept everything. Again, we were talking about the plan too much, but I think that's a safe plan from my little naive.
No, no, thank you so much. As we said in the beginning, I'm not sure if everybody was here, we did offer positions to all. Everybody that works at Alexian Brothers was offered positions. Eighty-nine percent of them accepted. We do hear loud and clear the perspectives of these nurses here. I can tell you, there is a cadre of nurses that understand. They're, they're going over to St. Alexis. They understand the differences. And, you know, we've just got to continue to work with our nurses to help explain the plan. But, but thank you for that. The intent is, we would move over. We would love for all of our nurses to move over and our physicians. The, the piece that people don't recognize... Right. But, but here's the thing that everyone, everybody's anticipating the volume at both places exactly the same right now. We, there are physicians at St. Alexis that may not be doing deliveries. They may do other things. So we're forecasting in the future. So I think everybody's thinking about the here and now. We understand that. What we're thinking about is the here and now, six months from now, one year from now, five years from now. And so to Dr. Bordeaux's point, you know, we do appreciate everybody's feedback. This has been eye-opening. We thank you for that. But again, we are true to our mission and we hope to regain the trust of you all that have been in Elk Grove Village for many years around the emergency department and all the other services. So I want to thank you for the feedback.
Okay, we'll ask, okay, last one. That'll be the last question. First off, go ahead, ma'am. Is there more questions? Okay, go ahead.
Great thought. We're absolutely in the middle of that. When I talked earlier about the, the screenings and the endoscopy unit, if you've been in there lately, I'm sorry. Was there a comment? She asked if we were to get...
Polly, Polly, go ahead. Just answer. You're fine.
Okay. So to your point, yes, we, we do believe there's opportunity for us to improve those things that are growing very actively right now. The endoscopy area, we're going to use different ways in which to, you know, help people move through the emergency department. So absolutely. Have we made a definitive decision about that? No, because we do not have approval yet, but we do have obviously plans in place. I'm, I can't answer that right now. It's a great, no, I mean, it's a great question. We have to work with the state. There are very rigid rules. And so I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer that. But I do, we're happy to get back with you. I don't have my lawyer here. I got a whole bunch of other people. So we do appreciate what you're saying. We, we feel like we've answered the questions in advance. We submitted our application. They sent us other questions. We've submitted those. So we're having ongoing conversations. But it would not be wise to not have a plan. And that's what we're trying to do. We have a plan and then we'll, we'll pivot if we need to. We have very few tra, we have very few travelers. Amanda's done a great job. We've been able to hire in, what, how many, we have four, we have four agency nurses at Alexian Brothers. That's prob...
Yeah, can you explain what this is? What's a traveling nurse? What's a traveling nurse?
It's a nurse that comes in intermittently. They, they'll come for a six-week or a 13-week stint. And so, you know, yes, we're, we're planning to have those available because some nurses have decided they're not going to stay at Alexian. But we only have four. We only have four. No. We have the lowest number of con, of agency in nursing in all of Ascension. We have the lowest in Illinois, which is a hats off to our teams to ensure that we...
So a traveling nurse like may work for Alexian, then may go to Northwest Community for 13...
Yes.
So in other words, they're nurses, but they, wherever they get, okay.
Yes.
So that's it.
And I think someone's been waiting very long for...
Ma'am, you got it right there. Next to Julie.
I wanted to address the center of excellence issue. And you use the cardiac unit at Alexian Brothers as an example of a success story. And I will, I will agree that your cardiac unit is great. My dad passed away in that unit, but he got great care there. However, my dad lives in Schaumburg, like about halfway between the two hospitals, and they sent him to St. Alexius. And that he got terrible care there. I don't know how good the person who operated on him or whatever you do when somebody has a heart attack did. But I know my mom has, has early-stage dementia. And she was with my dad. And when I got the call, I got there and they had no idea where my mom was, even though she was right where they put her. And it took me forever, like hours to get put with my mom. And then finally, the doctor comes back after working on my dad. And he was upset because he was supposed to have left on vacation, but he had to stay there to work on my dad. And he was literally yelling at my mom with early-stage dementia, who also has hearing problems. So she has problems understanding and understanding hearing that basically he was going to die. He was not going to survive. And my mom, but he, he didn't say it in clear terms. And my mom kept thinking that, well, when is he going to be able to come home? And he got so frustrated with her, you know, it was like, my mom was practically in tears. But she was married 50-some-plus years to my dad and, and was not cognitively aware of what was happening. And the doctor she saw was yelling at her. And that was the doctor that treated my dad. So, you know, who knows what would have happened if my dad got sent here? I, you know, he might, he might still be with us today, but he's not. And, and this is cardi, this is cardiology. So I understand. My dad was 84 years old. He might have got sent here. He might have died just the same. But what I'm saying is you're talking now about labor and delivery. So these are young women and these are babies who have never had a chance for, for life yet. And some of them are going to be in urgent need of care. And they're going to, they're not going to be able to get to St. Alexius. And they're going to come here. And a lot of those, Mr. Mayor, a lot of those people are going to be your community. This is the hospital that's closest to them and in that emergency where they'll end up going. And some of those women will die and some of those babies will die because they can't get there. And I understand you're saying things are changing and we got to accept it and we got to adapt. Are you willing to live with that? Are you willing to live with the fact that your community is going to be the one most adversely affected by this?
Well, I, I don't think a lot. That's why we're here today. That's why we're here today to hear how they're going to address the emergency situations that come up. As doctors said, they're training, they're working, they want to work with the nurses, I understand, to make sure that doesn't happen. Well, I don't, no one wants anyone, no one wants anyone to die. Like I said, I've got a daughter living in Elk Grove. She's going to be having a baby. So I don't want anyone to die and stuff like that. So that's why we're here today, to hear how they're going to address it and take care of it. But no one wants anybody to die. I agree heartily. Hey, I went to Long Hospital for my angiogram. I could have died driving here when they took me to Alexa with my surgery. I could have died in a snowstorm. So I know what you mean. You want to make sure it's done right. Steve, go ahead.
Hello. I am also an Elk Grove resident, have lived here the majority of my life. I have also lived in Schaumburg where St. Alexis was my hospital. I was there for ruptured ectopic, so I did go through the services there. I agree that mother and baby over there is probably fantastic. And I'm sure that you guys can handle the NICU babies. But as a mom, as a patient who was pre-ecclamptic, who didn't have time, who was an emergency C-section at Alexian Brothers, these ladies and the doctors that were there, not on call, not somebody I had to wait an hour for to arrive, the doctors that were there, because that's where they do their services, that's where they do their patients, that's where they deliver. I was saved because of that. I also worked there for 23 years. I was at work that day. I wasn't at home. I didn't get a chance to call 911. My husband didn't drive me in. I was at work and this all happened. In regards to the ER, you come in because you're laboring. They send you down the hall to labor and delivery. When a patient's going to come into the ER and you're going to say that you might be able to provide these services and then maybe transfer you out, that, that's great if Ascension's going to pay that bill. That's awesome. But what about the moms who don't have that time to be transferred? Where are they going to have that service? Are they going to be having an emergency C-section in room eight in the ER? Are they going to have time to go down to the OR and now I have to wait an hour for the team to come in, just like any on-call service that is provided? We turfed orthopedics over to St. Alexis. But now we have to bring it back. Why do we not have enough cases to do at Alexian Brothers that now we have to bring it back? You want a possible solution if the state says, "No, you cannot close." How many beds do we have in labor and delivery? 10 labor beds. Instead of closing it completely, why not downsize a little bit until things get situated? I've lived here, like I said, the majority of my life. We have a bunch of baby boomers that are retiring. But this village is coming back with young people, young groups, young couples. You want that community hospital because that's where you want to go. You don't want to have to get to that hospital and then it's told, "I'm sorry, I got to call an ambulance now," which is going to take maybe 45 minutes to get there because it's not going to be. Is it going to be EMS here? Or are you going to have to call Superior? And then you have to wait for them to come to take you over to St. Alexis. So now how much time has, have you waited there? I know about the transfers. I work in neuro. Nobody mentioned anything about our comprehensive stroke center. Centers of excellence, yes. I do think that cardiology is fantastic. Our stroke program is fantastic. But right now, that's all we have to go on. And yes, Ascension, you took a hit. We kind of, you know, we pooped a little bit since last year with everything that happened. The public does not trust us. I have a hard time explaining to my family members, my friends, still come to this hospital. It is still good. It's going to take a long time for Ascension to get back into the rights of the public. But if you keep sending ENT doctors, I'm sorry, I don't know of an ENT, an ENT doctor that's on staff because I haven't been able to do a nosebleed embolization for over, what, four years now? So I don't know what ENT doctor is there. But if they are, it's probably just an on-call service and they're not going to be able to be there for an epistaxis. That's a nosebleed. So my question is, why does it have to go all the way to closing? And if you close this department after the cyber attack, after you've let go, for whatever reason, contractual, rent, whatever it might be, if you let go of these doctors and let them leave, really, what does Alexian Brothers have left to offer other than a heart program and a neuro program? You got to really think about the community, the patient, and what's going to, what's going to work. It's not just Elk Grove. It is the surrounding hospitals. And my question is, if you do close, what's going to be the pushback from other providers? The ER doctors who haven't delivered a baby in how long? Are they going to stay and be like, "Oh, yeah, sure. We'll go ahead and handle this. Let me just make that phone call to EMS. Ship them out." You got to put the patient first. You got to put the staff first. Almost 25 years. I'm sorry, you guys have lost that. You'll have no problem hiring an agency nurse, a travel nurse. I'll give you $10,000, $20,000 or a sign of bonus. You haven't paid any of us to retain us. But we stay because we love our job. But you guys haven't fought for us. And right now, you're not fighting for the patients. You're not fighting for the moms that are going to need that emergency C-section. You're not fighting for them. It might just be money and dollar signs right now. But you need to take a step back and really think, yes, you want to look in the future. Look in the future because there's more to this, just, just Elk Grove. There's a lot more around us. And yeah, we might have other hospitals to go to. But why would you want that for Ascension? Why would you want to be like, "Yeah, just go to another hospital. Don't come to ours"? Why would you want that? You got to just really think about the patient. Put the patient first.
Doctors, I'm sorry, doctor, the OB doctor. How many patients a year come to a hospital in an emergency situation now with the umbilical cord or, I don't know what it's called? cord, or, I don't know what it's called officially, I mean, to be rude, what it's called? How many come, are they called at risk? How many come in at risk now, a year, at Alexian?
Well, the umbilical cord around the neck, can become an emergency, is relatively common, about 10% of deliveries have the cord around the neck. But I think that what they might be talking about is a cord prolapse, which is a different type of emergency. And I'd say coming in with that, that would be extremely rare.
How many emergency pregnancies that aren't normal, like, to me, it's all a miracle. But how many come in to Alexian now that are emergency-type cases? Not just the woman's close to delivery. How many of those come now, normally at Alexian Brothers, in a year?
How many patients that are close to delivery?
Well, no, how many are emergency patients? I mean, a normal delivery's a normal delivery. Dr. Mergs taught me that well with my kids, years ago. So, but I mean, how many come in that are considered an emergency situation, that, you know, life or death, like, we're worried about? How many a year come to Alexian Brothers?
Um, a lot of-
Is it every day you get one?
No. No, but a lot of the emergencies will happen during the course of labor, but there are some that will come in and that are emergent.
That's what I mean. How many that come in are emergency?
Uh, that come in that are an immediate emergency at that time. There is still, percentage is quite low, probably about less than 1%, but they are incredibly important.
Right. No, I know.
I, I think what we have to do is, part of our outreach is also to make sure that clinics that are sending patients are well-advised, that patients have information in multiple languages, that all this information is clear with maps and this, and where they're gonna go in case of an emergency. Dr. Bordeaux has reached out to the EMS systems in the area to inform them of what will be going on, because those are the ones that are coming in, you know, via ambulance bleeding and having emergencies. They won't be brought here on purpose to prevent this situation. But there will still be the, the blue H sign, as they mentioned. And so, we try to decrease and decrease. I don't think, due to the uncontrollable nature of medical emergencies, that you can ever bring it down to zero, sir. But it will be a low number, that is on purpose brought down as much as possible, and then handled in a safe, respectful way, and within the, you know, boundaries of the law, as well. As there are laws pertaining to what services you need to give the patient.
Right. You brought up a question about time to get a doctor there. If a, if a, if a woman's gonna deliver at 2:00 in the morning, how long does it take for her OB doctor normally to come?
Um, that, that can be variable, but there is always, at this present moment, there's an in-house doctor.
Okay, so there's always one there?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, you know, when you're delivering 1,300 deliveries a year, as they're doing at Alexian Brothers, you have somebody there present. So, if the doctor is not able to make it, or is on their way, or is driving, there's somebody there.
There's someone always there?
However, you know, those, those patients will have a doctor that is now gonna be at St. Alexius, or at a different facility, and we have to get the outreach as to where they're going to be, so that patients are looking forward to their delivery with their doctor that has their medical records. It's gonna be at St. Alexius for most of the patients. If another doctor chooses somewhere else, that's fine. And those planned deliveries can be 1,200 of those, but there might still be some that didn't get the message. But the point is, you have patients in multiple languages that don't speak English. Make sure that the patients that are planned to go there have information on how to go there. And the ambulances will not be bringing them to Alexian Brothers if it's a, you know, pregnancy complication. So, you've decreased that quite significantly. And then, out of maybe 50, how many of those will be in emergency? I, I would imagine the number's quite low, but still hard to deal with. I'm not going to, you know, decrease the importance. Difficult to deal with, and that's why we'll have, we'll be on-call, we'll be, you know, and able to transport and do what we need to do. Difficult situation, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We have-
We have one nurse who's interested in one question.
So, doctor, what happens in that situation?
I mean, it's just not, those numbers aren't, that's not right. And there's hospitals all across this country that don't have in-house-
So, doctor, that's a good point, bringing up, what happens if the, if you have to do a cesarean? I know that, 'cause my family's had 'em. You have to do a cesarean, and it's an emergency situation. So, no one can do it unless they're an OB doctor, or how's that handled?
In, in other community hospitals that don't have obstetricians, a surgeon, a general surgeon does it.
So, you have a-
It's not the ideal situation, but there are smaller communities that don't have as many obstetricians, and they will have general surgery do it. Not something a general surgeon typically wants to do, but in emergencies, that is a possibility. Can I speak to, there is a situation that has already happened in, at Sherman Hospital, where they closed their-
Speaking of my point, I'm sorry, if you don't mind. Thank you, doctor.
There is a situation in our area at Sherman Hospital where they closed their labor and delivery. The difference between what is happening at Sherman Hospital and what is planned at Alexian Brothers is, we're not closing the gynec department. There will still be gynecologists and obstetricians on staff at the hospital, who will still be present for surgeries and office and things in the area. So, in the situation with Sherman, we have been their transfer center for many years because they were originally part of our Ascension family.
You mean Elgin?
Or Elgin, is it Elgin?
Let's be clear.
St. Joe's, sorry, St. Joe's, Elgin. The transferring that happens and comes to us now is more an issue of the unavailability of a gynecologist to do a DNC on a miscarriage, than it is someone who's pregnant in an emergency that's getting transferred over. Part of it is getting the word out to the community that the hospital no longer has those services there, which takes a concerted effort, takes communication, and takes time to get that information out. But eventually, the community learns that this is not where I'm supposed to go if I'm having a problem. I go here, here, or here, within the other locations in the, in the, in the community.
So, you'd say, like, go to Northwest, or go to St. Alexis, you tell them, one of the other hospitals in the area, in an emergency situation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, next question, go ahead.
Well, I wanna stand. Thank you. Okay, can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Chaplin Sandy Rebeck. I worked at Alexian Brothers for many years. I had been called to labor and delivery on more than one occasion, when it was necessary. I wanna talk about your, what your plan is, because I, um, Alexian Brothers is my hospital. My family's, and my extended family's hospital. And I come 25 miles one way, get here. Now, I know an ambulance, but anything else, it would. For me, it's important that all of my doctors are located in one hospital where they can talk to each other, face-to-face, not just on, on whatever that system is. And I'm afraid you're going to lessen Alexian Brothers as a hospital, because these new people coming in who are young wanna get settled. Give them the place. Use the, the spiritual care that you claim to do, and I hope you still do. I will say, I don't think pastoral care is getting much in money these days. But, please, don't cut off your nose to spite your face.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't asked a question yet? That's, I don't wanna go through a second round, but anyone who hasn't asked a question yet, 'cause I did promise everyone had a question could ask. Anybody? Okay. Well, we'll take one second question, and then we're gonna let our state rep, Michelle Mostman, she's been very patient.
Can we talk in this?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think, Polly, you have established little credibility. I was at that forum meeting on July 19th. And first of all, I have been, I am a resident of Elk Grove, have been for 45 years. Alexian Brothers is my hospital. My family goes there, I've had my babies there. I have a daughter that works there in labor and delivery. My entire family goes there. And I worked there for 23 years. And Alexian Brothers, I always knew it as a nonprofit organization, and, and Mayor Johnson, you're absolutely right, I think this whole issue is about money. I can see, Polly, that you're sitting there, and you're saying, I don't really care what people think, 'cause I'm gonna do this anyway, I'm closing this unit, it's getting closed. I honestly believe that's how you think. And I really, I was just shocked, too, at that meeting, to find out that for a nonprofit organization, and as such, and I realize it's a big profit, it's a billion-dollar industry across the nation, I was shocked to find out what your yearly salary was for nonprofits.
That, ma'am, that could be true, but that's, this is not the-
I know, but I'm just saying, for nonprofits-
We're trying to be polite here.
And I'm not gonna say what her salary was.
Okay, but-
But I was just shocked, as a resident, to find out, if working in a hospital that was for nonprofits-
You'd be shocked to find out how little I make as your mayor. That's shocking.
No, no, I know.
That's the shock.
I know how little you make.
Trust me.
I know how little you make.
So, but if you got a point about, that's fine.
But what I'm saying is, I really think that you have really, for me, again, has established no credibility whatsoever, and that you're just gonna do what, you know, you're paid to do, and that's to close that unit. And it's very sad. And on a, on a good note, I'm gonna say, God bless everybody in this room, including Polly in the panel and everybody. Thank you again, Mayor, for having this for all of us.
Thank you. And remember that point I brought up, how little the mayor's paid? Remember that one. Michelle, you get to finish up, Michelle. Everyone else went. Your chance.
I, thank you. Um, you're very kind to look out for me. I feel bad that I don't have anything more profound to offer. Actually, my original question was more along the lines of the one mayor asked earlier about the high expenses for ambulance transfer fees. A lot of our residents are really struggling with that, and that was a big concern for me, if that's gonna, if that's gonna increase. I think what I would say is, you, you can obviously hear, there's a lot of concern about what the pathway will be, whether this is approved or not approved. I think it would be very helpful if, after that decision is voiced, we have another meeting, and you are able to articulate to the community, this is what our next plan will be. Either whatever you're gonna do now that the answer is no, or whatever you're gonna do about the 60-day transition, or however long that will take, just so people have a little bit of comfort and clarity and closure, and can ask some more questions. I know that's a lot to ask, but clearly, I think it would be beneficial.
First off, for those that stuck around, thank you. Again, a lot of good points, a lot of emotion, I understand. You've all controlled yourself very well, I appreciate it. Am I happy? No. Would I like to see maternity continue? Yeah, my daughter, my baby daughter's gonna have more kids, I want her to be at Alexius, I'm spoiled. But I also have to look at the real world. We don't always get what we want. But we want them to make sure what we do have is the best available. And who knows? Maybe a doctor group might buy the hospital. Maybe someone will, who knows? Maybe Ascension keeps going, I don't know. But I'll make sure, I can promise you this, this board will stay on top of this. Polly's heard too much from me already. Julie, I know, has heard too much from me. We've had some, Mr. Johnson's been a little mad at me, 'cause I got a little too hot with Julie one time, talking. But we're here to make sure, we try to do what's best for Elk Grove. I know other communities might be here, we want all of you to do well. But we're gonna make sure we do what's best for Elk Grove. Unfortunately, sometimes, things are out of our hands, so we have to make sure the results can be the best for Elk Grove. So, again, I may be brutally honest, I know she'd probably cringe if I said it's about money. That's the whole world. Ask my firemen, who are very pissed off at us, we stop them going on engines every fire call, we got modified pickup trucks. What we call those, chief, jump trucks? What? Squad trucks. They were pissed at me for years on that one. But it's all part of finding, to make sense, send $2 million, or engines on a call where some kid broke his ankle? Or a more cost-effective? We make decisions, too. And it's worked out okay. So, we didn't make a bad. So, my hope is, whatever they do is right, but I wanna say this, thank you for coming. Thank you for that, and your voice to be known. I know it's hard not to get personal sometimes, it just affects you emotionally, I respect it. But thank you, 'cause they need to hear what you said today. What you folks said on the 19th is why we're having this public meeting today. Because I think they heard an earful that day, we want them to hear an earful today. Not personal stuff, that's not what it's meant, but professional stuff about what the hospital's doing. 'Cause they've already admitted, they made mistakes. Polly already apologized, that's always the first step to start. They admit that they made mistakes, they admit that they're gonna look at things differently, and they admit that they're gonna try to straighten some things out. That radiology's important. I talked to a lot of doctors, a lot of nurses, they talked about that radiology. As doctors said, they're fixing that problem. That's important. Others talked about the importance of other areas, the ER, important, I think, and me and my department. They're looking and finding ways to fix it. So, they don't know that sometimes, they're, this was good if we did it. So, I thank you all for coming. Don't lose faith, keep the faith. That's what keeps us going. I'm a good Catholic, so faith gets us going, and God works in mysterious ways, trust me. So, let's see what happens. I do think you folks will come. Polly, it's probably something you never thought you'd do in a billion years. And it's not easy, I know. I've been through it many times. And doctors, all of you, for coming and helping and assisting. And everyone else from Alexian Brothers, we appreciate it. You can tell we're not all very happy, but we have faith you're gonna do the right thing. And I think you will, I believe that, I truly believe that in my heart. So, we thank you all, folks, we thank you.